Second, special meeting of the Tivenden Town Council, please stand for pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
So the chairman of the Recreation Committee is here and he has the-
Roll call.
Oh, roll calling.
Councillor Edwards?
Present.
Councillor Janik?
Present.
Councillor Edwards?
Present.
Councillor DiMediris?
Present.
Councillor Burke?
Present.
Councillor Milburn?
Present.
Councillor Perry is absent.
So from now on, someone in the audience needs to put up a sign.
It's just the run-up.
Roll call, please. I know. All right, Stu is here, and he's got the first three items. Come on up, Stu.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So what I provided you with, because when I went to the Budget Committee, I just wanted to make sure that they had had it, and they didn't have it in front of them at the time, is some backup to where our requests are coming from in here. A couple of things that I'm happy to answer.
One second, page 14, everybody.
And then everybody should also have a copy of the additional sheets that I handed out. So I think you may have the totals in there, but what the additional document I handed out is, as we go through each of these different areas, the additional three sheets should be the backup for each section of this.
So let's do beaches.
Okay. So one of the things is, last year, when I presented to you, it was noted that there was an error in the budget, actually, as it had been presented, there was a, we actually decreased the number in what was submitted, and I mentioned it in my presentation to you and also connected with Chris, and somehow that got lost on the final budget that went out and was approved. So what you're seeing in here, to begin with, for the beaches coordinator, is a reflection of putting it in line with what we were originally looking to have for last year, and what we ended up needing to pay out for that particular individual, plus a very small increase.
Okay.
So it had been listed at 6,500, when in fact, the year before, it had been 7,500. This is bringing, we were actually meant to request 8,500, and that had been mentioned but not included in our presentation last year. So just to explain why that number looks like it's much larger.
All right.
For the seasonal employees, within here, the rates, and these are based on what we found as averages across the state, lifeguards are getting $18 an hour. It seems high, I will completely agree, but that is what the Rhode Island Recreational Professionals Association, when they did a survey, came back, that a lot of the programs in state, that's pretty much what the average is. And then for gate attendants, we've got it listed at $13 an hour. So based, you've got the weekly totals here, and then what the total is for the season. We are actually looking to lower the number of gate attendants, based on the hope that, from the proposal that we've put forward to you to get an RFP for automated parking, that will actually reduce that number. And then within our miscellaneous operating supplies, in the past, we've looked at how to support lifeguard training for staff to make it appealing. This is something we actually wanted to bake into the budget. Again, lifeguards have been an area of concern for us the last couple of years, and this just seems like an easier way to help ensure we get them. And we do have some good candidates this year, and this is something that has been appealing to them, and we've discussed it.
Are we on miscellaneous operating supplies? We are, right?
Yep.
You went down.
Yep, we did.
Okay.
Yeah. So we've been able to, thanks to your support over the past couple of years, been able to provide what we needed in different places, so we don't have as much of a need in the space right now. One note in here, and it's something that Director Rogers will also speak to, is you'll notice there's a line that says bathroom pumping and maintenance of $2,000. One of the things that rec and, yes.
Where is that?
It's in the backup.
Backup.
Okay.
It's highlighted in yellow, it says move to DPW.
But it doesn't, oh, it's moved to DPW.
This is just the details on-
I got it.
Running through the details of-
Okay, I got it, I'm sorry.
So one of the things, from a speed of, certain efficiency standpoint, is that, right now, if we need to do something, it has to come before rec and get approved, and then the expenditure has to go from there. Whereas with DPW, there are certain things that can't necessarily wait, that need to be taken care of. And so, things like bathroom pumping and maintenance, Rick and I had looked at how, for particular areas of need in the town, funds could be put into a particular location, that the DPW would be able to respond to the needs more quickly. If anybody would prefer to wait until next meeting to have bathrooms pumped, we could discuss that, but I don't think anyone wants to. So that was the thought. So as you're looking at this, we have it listed into rec's budget, but it would be something, again, as you're looking at how to adjust where it could potentially go into, into DPWs instead.
Oh, so it's in the dollar amount right now?
Dollar amount is in here.
That's what I was asking. So what figure reflects that?
That is under, it's, there's $2,000 under miscellaneous operating supplies.
So we take that down to 7,600?
Yes.
And put that in DPW?
Into DPW. Yep. We had listed this in here because-
Is that all right? That's, you have had that discussion?
Yes, we did, thank you.
Okay.
We put it in here because when we submitted the budget, it was something that has been under rec's purview, so we wanted to make sure it was accounted for.
So that number would go down to 61,870, the total?
Would go down to, you're taking $2,000 off the 9,600.
Right, but the total-
Right, but the total.
Would be 60, we're looking at.
Yes, yes, sorry.
Any questions on beaches?
So do you think that we will have sufficient lifeguard coverage so that we don't have to not charge for parking?
We believe so. We're feeling very positive where we are. We have a strong candidate beach coordinator. We're just waiting on, hopefully, a contract back. So we feel like we're in pretty good shape, better than we've been before. And I actually want to credit Recreation Commission member at 70 for sort of taking the charge on putting that together. So yes, the answer is yes.
So I know it's been very difficult in years past to get lifeguards. It's expensive for them to certify. By the time we're looking, the certifications have passed. So in another part of my life, I sit on the board for the YMCA, and what they do, and granted, they have a pool and they can do this, they host a lifeguard training, and they end up hiring about half of them. So I don't even know, I know in your world, you have a lot of different contacts, but I don't know if that's ever something, just a thought.
Yeah, so my office has happened to be on the campus of Roger Williams University, which has a pool. So we've connected with their aquatics department, and we've also connected with Jim Farrell, who's the Little Compton director, and his, I'm not sure his official title, but he trains lifeguards. And so Jim is, I think, going to help work with us to put together a training that we probably could also offer to Bristol, to Middletown. So yeah, definitely thinking along those lines. There have been other trainings out there, but we want to make sure we can offer one.
Just as a note, because we've talked about revenue and what's brought in by these programs, the beaches have brought in 40,000 as of this date. So, um, that's good, because it offsets your spending.
Well, and please remember, we also approved a non-resident parking pass this year, so we actually expect there to be an increase in the revenue we generate.
Yeah, because this is only 80% collected so far, and there'll be more coming in, because the beaches open May 30th.
Yep.
Yeah, so we lose basically like a month to this fiscal year. So that's not bad.
No, it's not bad at all.
Basically net zero.
Yeah.
Because I think, right here, I calculated a delta of 8870, so.
Yeah, you're almost at net zero.
Good job.
All right, summer recreation. This has been an increase, but I'll just explain.
Yep. So summer increase, within this, we're looking to bring the Parks Partner Coordinator role in line with what the beach coordinator role is. From a work standpoint, it's very similar in terms of the hours and the commitment. In fact, in some cases, there's more management required. And please also remember that we've approved aftercare, so the hours are extended both for the coordinator and for the camp counselors, which is why it's mostly reflective of what the increase is. So we are bringing in more revenue to offset that, but we're also asking people to work additional hours.
Now, how many camp counselors do we have last year?
I want to say that we had 10 last year, I believe.
And we're increasing it this year to?
We're adding two more, plus we've introduced the counselor, a formal counselor and training program, to create a pipeline as well.
And plus, the hours have been, like you just noted, have been extended.
Yep.
All right, transportation fee.
So these all relate to the items that are now part of that program. So we're dealing with the buses or the fees related to it. So this is based on what we had paid last year. And we're targeting, right now, the camp is set at 100 students. There is capacity to go up, which is what we're accounting for. But again, that's going to be relative to ensuring that we have enough camp counselors to support it. So it's something we'll continue to look at, but we're basing it on a cap of 150.
Okay.
I have a quick question on this.
Go ahead.
So we got the revenue numbers today, and I noticed that the camp programs' revenue number is listed at zero. Do you have an estimate as to what revenues would be?
I have, I have, this year's revenue was 15,930,42.
Yeah, so that looks like that's park programs?
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at.
Yeah. So, well, for the camp, our, there's a lot, on the revenues, we just got 4775 camp programs is marked at zero. I'm assuming that the revenue for these would fall under there, right?
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm saying. I think it's under park programs, yeah.
Yeah, and there's, there are other things that fall in that. So we have brought all of the programs, including the contractors that we work with, also through that. So we are actually, because there's other programs, like there's a STEM program and some other stuff, but for our direct program, that should be within there.
Okay. So, I mean, we'll just have to address that when we get to revenues, because there should be a line item for camp programs.
Right, I just assumed that, that's, the park programs were-
Is, I think they've been synonymous in the past.
Yes, that's what it's always been. Because if you look-
It'd be good to break it out, though.
Yeah, because it's mostly the camp that's bringing that number in.
What was it, Stu, for the new fees? Like, let's just assume it was all?
It's actually on the bottom of the backup sheet down there.
Oh. Yeah, no, so this number, this number right here, this 36,600 should be-
That's the projected.
Yeah, it should be in 4775 camp programs.
But that's projected. Right.
I'm sorry?
Plus the 14,900? For the aftercare?
Oh, well, so what, yeah, the aftercare, I believe, is what's listed here. It looks like the Excel sheet cut off on it. But yes, those are the numbers for aftercare, so it would be both of those combined. So we don't count for, the revenue goes, because it doesn't come to us, this is more just for identification.
No, but it, right, but it goes into the general fund, which does offset your expenses.
Yeah, so you're looking at Paul Park about, we're projecting about $50,000 based on these numbers. And the aftercare number, you'll notice, is reflective of not every single student taking care, taking account for it. So I think it's based on a 60% fill rate in here. That number could actually be higher. We have the capacity for it, but we may or may not have it.
So on that, it would be a net, on the summer rec, it's a net of, net cost of $8,550, assuming these projections pan out.
Right, right. Okay, so this is the big one.
So did you want me to move on to events?
Can I just go back? I do.
Okay.
The buses that we use, is that the same, the same company that we use for the schools?
It was not last year. The former rec commission member, who's a principal in Bedford, was actually the one that found, so we used a different company. But we are in discussions with them about a different type of event, and it's been expanded to speak with them about using it for our summer program here, see what the cost would be. So we'd like to keep it-
The same, the same one as the schools? Because maybe them could recognize some kind of a save. They really hold us hostages for the schools, and there's really no, there's no bidding. You know, the cost they get is the cost. So if we could at least look at it and see if we could recognize some kind of savings somewhere.
Yeah, as part of the parade discussions, we're trying to work with them potentially on one option, and I actually reached out about the summer camp as well, just to get a quote for these different events.
I was, we do have the senior bus, you know that. I don't know what their capacity is.
I don't know-
150.
No, but I'm just saying, I don't know if they have 150 going to these things either.
Yeah, I mean, I'd be happy, if it could, if there's enough capacity within that bus, I'd be happy to. I just wasn't thinking that it would fit 125, 130.
Well, it wouldn't, but you don't know how much.
I can check, I can ask Janet and see.
I mean, generally, how many kids go on the field trips?
Just take them to the senior center.
No, how many kids usually go though?
Well, this year, because it's included in it, we're expecting almost all of them. I would say, yeah, if we're gonna, it would be probably at least 80.
No, that wouldn't work.
Isn't the senior bus like 20?
I think it's 30-something, but the thing is, I know that last year, there wasn't a huge amount of kids that went on these.
No, what we found, part of the reason, not to go off topic here, but the, part of the reason we started rolling it into the camp fees was, one, we felt, we wanted people to think that they were, and feel that they were getting more, but also, logistically, as we got closer to the event, people came out of the woodwork saying, hey, can I go? And it's just, it's very difficult to plan, so.
Any other question?
I have one more. So are you using two separate credit card processing things for the beaches versus, because I noticed it's specifically called out here as Clover Connect?
Yep, so Clover Connect is the one that we utilize for rec desk, which is our online platform. It is, we're in the process for the, we'll have to see who the vendor we get back is for the beaches, and then as we move forward, there may be an opportunity to connect with them, there may not. It may be something that's directly linked to our camp. In the past, prior to using rec desk, we'd actually gone through PayPal, and I would rather gouge my eyes out again.
Yeah, makes sense.
I think Denise also would. So we're going to take a look at it, but it's going to be based on what the recommendation from the treasurer is as well.
All right, thank you.
Okay, and events?
All right. So I just put fundamentally in here what all of the events that we have been doing over the course of the last couple of years, to give a full rundown of what we've had to essentially account for. Within this, I would note, we haven't had an events coordinator. The rec commission's been filling that role under the community special events, and we did want to break events out separately. They've always been under something else, but they run the full year, so it seemed to make sense to do that. We fully funded the concert series through the generosity of local businesses and folks this past year. The parade had asked for some support in here with police department and mailers, so we added it in. The big one is obviously fireworks. That was not part of our budget, and again, came through the kindness of the council here. And then other things that we're looking at doing-
It came out of the power plant donation.
Yep. And then we are looking at launching potentially a movie concert series. We've done the tree lighting. There was the Hanukkah celebration last year, and then also, last year, National Night Out was, it's a police department event, but it was supported by, I think the middle school was represented, PTO, and they had had some inflatable, and this is an area where rec said we'd love to step in and help a little bit, and so that's, that's what's reflected here for a community event. So again-
68,000?
Yep. So if you were to take the 50,000 out for the fireworks, and you were to go through and say, you know, the concert series also, again, has been individually handled, that right there is 58,000 of it, and then-
So this number is actually like 10,000?
Well, the reality here is that I don't know, if the fireworks this year are success, I don't know where the money, if we wanted to do them again, would come from. So it doesn't necessarily have to stay in recreation. It's, a lot of it is just a question of, how would we approach it?
When I suggested that we use the power plant money, I was hoping that this would get other businesses in town to say, hey, maybe I'd like to give some money for the fireworks this year. So what I was hoping, that that would end up being a community contribution for the fireworks.
Can we plan for that, though?
Well, we can't, but that's a high ticket to tax people for.
No, and I understand-
And that was one of the reasons we agreed to fireworks, was because we could do it through community donations.
No, I, and I, I think your point is well-taken and very valid. One of the challenges that we run into is that, if you look down this list, every item that gets replaced with a need for fundraising requires somebody to fundraise. And so there's a limited scope of time to be able to do that. So you run the risk of it not coming back, but I also understand, you know, I'm, thankfully, I'm first this time. I think last time, I was right after the fire department asking for the jaws of life.
Yeah, your fireworks seemed a little silly compared to that.
No, no, and I, again, I'm not going to sit up here and defend it relative to that, but-
No, well, what I'm hoping is, you know, I'm thinking of big businesses, like maybe the casino would like to donate for this, and I'm sure we could get volunteers to go out and look.
Couldn't we get the EDC to help with that?
We could get the EDC to help with that.
And they helped with the summer concert series last year, getting them out. They were a big help in that space.
Oh, so just real quick, one thing, Stu was texting me last night, and I don't see an issue with it, but I said, you know, I'd raise it, if anybody have any, has any concerns about when he advertises on the fireworks, to call out the generous donation of the power plant?
Oh, absolutely. And I was almost hoping to talk to Bob or Palatier, and maybe we'd have a little banner there that, that day.
Yeah.
I think I mentioned it to her, but I, I think we should have, we really should advertise that they paid for this.
Oh, very happy to. I just wanted to make sure it was all right with you before doing so.
So if we take, just as, because we have to find reductions, we know that in the budget. So if we take 50,000 out, that number would go down to 18,250. And then also, what else do we take? Oh, the summer concert.
Probably not doing anything in my best interest here, but we do have some money that we've already generated for the summer concert series, so that if you needed to make a reduction, we would, we would still be able to proceed with the summer concert series.
Okay. So we could bring that number down to 10,000, for now, anyway. And keep in mind, we still have power, we still have money, the power plant, I think we have about 120 in there now. And we have the casino, although the casino, we're trying to buy major equipment for that. But we still have some of that for things like this.
The events you're looking at here, other than the movies, which is what would be a new addition to this, the Recreation Commission is doing these right now with the capacity that we have. What I would say, my concern is, is as we go forward, we'd love to be able to continue doing them, and it's, we're going to have to figure out a way that's sustainable. So if this is not the time to have that sustainability conversation, I'll just be back next year or two, so.
Well, I'm, I'm just thinking for now, this is just my suggestion, to bring it down to 10,000, and then keep it as a bullet item if we want to do anything else with that.
And still keep the events coordinator?
The events coordinator you asked for last year, do you want to justify that again?
Well, in the same, yeah, sure. In the same place that we have somebody managing beaches, and we have somebody managing programs, we're looking at our events and looking to expand. And so it comes down to the bandwidth availability.
And I have to tell you, it was all, it was a lot of all, Stu, last year.
Yeah, I have a very good commission, and I will say that very committed.
But it's a lot to ask them considering the organization with all these.
There's 18 events.
Right.
And you're planning more this year?
So I, I would suggest 10,000 for community special, and we do, and include the event coordinator.
And we're going to need the supplies, too.
Yeah, we're going to get to that. And your supplies?
Yep, so, and these are, again, this is something where, if we're moving forward with movies, we're going to need the materials to be able to do it. Same with the other items in here. But I also understand, you know, these are ones we can look to try to source in other places. One of the things we looked at, for example, like with the menorah having, as a project, a community project, if we want to have somebody try and build one, I think we can, can take a look at that. Councillor Burke's been great at giving advice on what we might need to do, so we can, we can find a way if this is a place you need to reduce.
My suggestion is to keep it that way for now, and it reduces the number to 24,900. Am I right, John? My mathematician?
So what, are you keeping the 49?
Keeping the 49 for that.
And so what, community special events becoming like 10,000?
Community special events will become 10,000.
So we're taking 58-
58,250.
250 out of that.
I think I'm right, because 10,10. It'd be 24,900. Oh, there it goes.
Stu, you got a question on the, on the popcorn refreshments component?
Popcorn refreshments?
I'm assuming that this is a line item here, because we would, are we going to raise revenue off of that? Is that the anticipation that, like, people would pay?
Yeah, it could be, and I also think, you know, when I talk about getting something like this, I also look at it as if another committee or commission in town wanted to use it, it's a town resource. It's not just recreation, so.
So you're talking about getting like one of those little popcorn popping things?
It would be like what Fort Barton has, is that what you're talking about?
Well, and that's what we've been, in particular places, borrowing, yeah, so.
It's like a big popcorn machine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, I don't see a problem with that.
We use it for the Christmas, the tree lighting.
Yeah.
Stu's wife runs it.
My kids are going to leave Fort Barton something.
No, I'm just holding back.
All right, what did, what did we say the bottom line was?
24,900. Any other questions for Stu?
So the very bottom line is 146,830?
I haven't done that, but you're probably right, because we adjusted.
We took two, and we took 58,20, 250.
61,800, 24,900, and then 60,000, 60,000. We didn't take anything out of summer?
No.
No. So what's the number again?
I have 146,830?
830. Yeah. John, are you adding it?
Yeah, no, um, and I, you know, I personally think that some of these community events, you know, we, we as a council could, you know, tangentially commit to helping on the fundraising side, too, so. And I think they're important, so. For budgetary purposes, it makes sense to pull some of these things out, but it doesn't necessarily mean they have to go away.
Sure.
Oh, yeah, absolutely not, no.
We're just going to find off-budget, off-budget revenue to support it, that's all.
And like I said, we still have, like, the power plant money, we have told the power plants for community resource, for community events and things, so we always have that. And I don't know if you heard me the other day, but I told the senior coordinator, if she wanted some of that money to give us some idea, because we do a lot for the children and the general community. But we'll be talking about all of that at another time. All right? Any other questions? Thank you.
Great, great job, Stu, great job. Denise.
Oh, so-
You can't hear me?
So we took 2,000 out of miscellaneous operating supplies and beaches, so it's 61,870 for parks and rec? Beaches, for beaches, 61,870 for beaches. We kept the 60,000, 060 for summer rec.
Okay, yep.
And the events, we brought down to 24,900, and that was by making community special events 10,000 even. So the bottom line for everything is 146,830. We'll try to do better to speak into the mic, too. 146,830. Yep. You're welcome.
All right, so what I'm going to do is, I'm going to have the police chief come up and just, we're going to look at his corrected numbers, and then the DPW director has, is going to be last. We're going to bring the school department after that. And he has, you know rec, he's very cooperative. All right, Chief Jones? So.
Good morning.
This, what is it?
Good morning.
It'd be page seven, although it is cut off, it doesn't say page seven.
Oh, okay. Yeah, there is.
Page eight's the total number, because when we looked at general contractual and operations, we were good with those numbers. It's really just the bodies piece that we had an issue with on page seven.
It's the salaries, is that what you're saying?
Exactly.
Right, that's what I mean, yeah.
All right, so we've adjusted it?
So you should have for salaries total, proposed is 3,655,795. And that does include the proposed raises for ASME, both last year and this anticipated year, July 1st.
And you did take the probationary out?
That is correct.
Well, it's predominantly driven by the addition of the SRO.
Right, so that includes two SRAs.
That is correct.
Does everything? Dennis, you weren't here last time. The numbers got a little bit confusing. So we went back to the drawing board.
I was lost.
Well, the difference between the administrator's numbers and the police chief's numbers were a little off.
Because of what Chris included with the raises.
Right.
Correct.
So they had a little meeting and.
Is that signed yet, that contract?
It is not.
What contract?
AFSMI.
No.
I do have one, one question on this though.
It might, it might have been voted on this week.
I believe it's been presented. It is very, very close.
Yes, okay. That's why it's not on this agenda, because it wasn't finalized yet.
So.
I was just going to say, it's either in our contingency or it's in US.
Yes, it's in our contingent.
Right, right. This includes it.
So, um, two items, obviously overtime, we're getting, we're getting a bump. And I'm assuming, correct me if I'm wrong, when we look at the actual overtime number of 5104, it's, we're at 170 right now.
Yes.
But I'm assuming that, that original budget item, the 180 included the 20,000 for the offset for when we have, when the SRO takes a day off, we get to send a, an overtime police officer to cover it, right?
No, that's a new proposal.
Okay.
So basically the overtime currently to date is short because of manpower.
Okay.
So, um, given the number of shortages that we have, that'll be a transfer in front of you, definitely in the coming weeks. Because with the number of payrolls we have left, we're not going to make it.
Okay. So with that 20,000, the overtime, school security and training piece?
Yes.
Is that an item, if assuming we hire a second SRO, we could just cut it because we will have at least one coverage always?
Part of what that proposal includes also is training. So that was to work with the school department, work with the SRAs. So if we're doing lockdown drills, it's going to be more than two police, just the two SRAs.
Okay. No, that makes sense.
Bravo.
I'm just looking for nickels.
Oh, you did take out the school security officers.
Yes, ma'am. Excuse me.
You can call me sir.
And some of that training is, is after hours.
Correct.
All of it, really?
Correct.
Uh, just as the police, just as the fire we discussed. If you have overtime because of absent, because of open positions, then we have that money in open positions.
Yes, ma'am, right.
So that offsets that also. Anything else?
Well, the only other one, I'm assuming this is just a variable based off of when we have retirements or departures, is the sick leave buyback. So right now we've only spent like 8,400 bucks, but that could balloon significantly.
So what happens with that? That's an end of the year expenditure. So we'll be putting that out within the next few weeks. Officers need to tell us contractually if they're going to buy back, they can, each individual officer can buy back up to 10. But they need to have 10 in their bank to buy. So that's why, that's why we wait till the end of the fiscal.
Okay.
It's a nebulous number.
Correct.
And that was the only numbers that changed, correct?
Yes.
Everything else looked okay. Any other questions?
Uh, I mean, unfortunately, I guess I'm good with the 40, 40, you know, a four point, call it 2 million.
At some point, we're going to look at the entire thing and decide if we need to.
Might have to look at this side.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Schools?
We, so it's, did you get the new?
Nothing changed.
We didn't change anything. On the new one, April 17th?
It reflects it in here.
In the April 17th one. Do you have one that's dated April 17th? So that number we didn't change today. Nope.
Correct. Oh, thank you.
Because if you look at the March, you'll see the changes we made the other day. And then it looks this.
You give me something to sketch on, because I left my giant book at the house. Thank you.
I have to tell you guys, I mean, we do have a lot on the school department. Look at this. Do you want to?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the town council. It's a pleasure to be in front of you this morning. Provide you with some information on our budget request and so I want to be able to answer any of your questions. We just distributed to a PowerPoint that I'll, I'll speak from, sort of the overview of the budget. Thank you, Madam Chair, for showing our budget book. Hopefully you have a copy of that.
Everybody has one.
Refer to that also for some information, may answer some of your questions. So I'll just go through the PowerPoint first. To, you know, every year we get together and we talk about what are the goals of the school system. And if I was just to take all those bulleted items and narrow it down rather than read them all to you. It's simply to take what we're doing this year and move it forward one year. No new programs, no new staff. Call it level service budget. Pay for special ed, pay for energy, pay for transportation, nothing else. So that, that's the essence of our, our budget request. The, uh, next slide is our enrollment, which always pays, plays a factor in our state revenue coming in. And you can see here, um, where we're actual for this year and then what's predicted in 23, 24 and what our past has been. Certainly 20, 2020 is an anomaly. I wouldn't pay attention to that number. That was the pandemic year. We had a number of homeschool students. We had a number of people just kept their students home. And it just doesn't reflect what the actual, as you can see, it jumped back up in 2021. And again, I'm just going to keep moving through this slide if you have a question until the end. So you heard me mention the term level service budget, moving everything ahead one year, just paying the bills. And that budget number is 36 million. I'll, I'll make it round numbers there. And if, you know, we realize that's a number that's not going to want to be achieved. However, if we had that budget, but even if it was whatever it was, it's based upon people. Our people are our greatest success, right? So the blue part, 71% of our budget goes to keeping all the people that we have in place. And everything else on there is, you know, energy, special education, transportation. There's another slide coming up that I break it down by those numbers and make it a little easier to understand. But if you were to take that 71%, that's what the next chart is. How do we spend 71% of a budget? Well, you know, 62% are for teachers, the lifeblood of our school system. And then you can see it's administrative, it's paraprofessionals next, and custodial administrative assistance, then administration. You can see the rest of the categories there. So our budget is focused on our people. That's how we get, generate our success in the school system. So let's start with a starting place and these are numbers that may look familiar to you. This is our current budget. You can see what the local contribution was from last year, what state aid was. And then there was an adjustment in state aid after the budget was finalized, which again, we're showing it at 251,000. But in the end, what it netted out to be was a budget that was appropriated to the school department for 37, 33,783,193. So that's where we're working from. And the most important number for you folks is that 26,547,151. That's the number we're going to work off of with our request. As you heard me again, use the term level service and what we're budgeted for. You know, that term structural deficit, you know, I know there's been some communication about, do we have a structural deficit? Don't we have a deficit? You can decide how the terminology applies. The budget we worked off of this year, if you take all the sources of revenue that we used, was 35,140,612. We were appropriated 33,000, 33,700. So we used 1.3 million on one time revenue. Now, you can call that a structural deficit. You can't, I mean, by definition, I believe that's what it is. And we use that revenue then, if you flip one more slide, to maintain critically needed positions. And again, I won't go through that list with you there, but they're all listed out there. In your budget book that you have in the personnel section, and you flip in two pages, there's a list of the staff that we've reduced by over the last few years. So we, we've cut basically, not basically, 31.7 FTEs, 31.7 staff members. And so we want to maintain, again, level service. We want to maintain the staff we have right now. A little more background information, I think the next chart is, is rather important. And, and this shows a, a 10-year look at appropriations to the school department. Lot of information on there, a lot of columns. I would just call your attention to the column that says town contribution and percent increase. And if you just go down that list, and I'll, I'll read this to you. 2.18, 0.06, negative 0.06, negatives 4.8, 0.40, 6, 0.87, 389, 365. So people often ask, you know, why is the school department always carrying this 1 million, this 1.2 million dollar gap in our budgets? And hopefully this is evident to you that if you look at those years, FY 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21. You all realize, and it's something that's obvious, bus transportation was going up, energy was going up, special education was going up. Whatever raises were given were going up, steps in lane, contracts were always. So somehow the school department was getting by on revenue they didn't have to pay those bills. And that always catches up to you. And so the other category I'd have you look at is the last one on that, is that even when sometimes the town increases us, it's a balancing act with state aid, right? And we're going to see that again this year, that the last column shows the overall increase. And so again, I won't read all that to you, but I'll just point out one, that, you know, the year we got a 6.02, it's actually less because state aid went down. Or if you look at last year, or excuse me, FY 22, 389, but it was 1.18.
Let's look at FY 21.
FY 21, uh, we were zero, negative 0.87 and overall six, up 0.67.
How, how is it possible for us to have a negative number? If we have maintenance of effort, like we always have to appropriate at least a dollar more, so. For 17, 18 and 21, that, that, that reduction doesn't make any sense to me. Like if, if FY 23 was, you know, 23,489, 232, then FY 17, even if it was flat, should be 23,489, 233.
Because in FY 21, our con, our contribution was higher than FY 22. You see what I'm looking at? So how can that be a point eight, 0.87?
Well, the 0.87 is a decrease from the prior year.
Oh, wait a minute. So this isn't the increases you got from the town?
No, this is the town contribution column.
The town contribution.
If you look at FY 20.
We would have to go to the state legislature to reduce our contribution.
Yeah, that doesn't make any sense to me because if we gave you 24,867 in FY 20, we could not possibly have given you less.
Except that was a, FY 20 was a petitioner's budget.
That doesn't matter whether it was a petitioner or not. We gave you less money. We can't give you.
We had, we would have had to at least give you.
Right, maintenance of effort, we have to at least have given you the 24,867.
Well, keep in mind, maintenance of effort is a combination of two components.
But we can't go down.
No, the town physically cannot go down.
So if the state went up.
No, it's not, that isn't true. That is not true.
It's our, it's our contribution.
It's our contribution, because I was on the school committee, I know this. So how could we?
These are, these are the numbers on the budget docket and what was audited. So I can certainly get back to you with an answer for that.
Well, the answer is this is wrong.
Not, not necessarily.
Well, these, these numbers are wrong because like John just pointed out, we couldn't possibly have given you less. And then if you look at this, we've given you less every year. That doesn't make any sense to me.
Well, as I said, these are what are on the budget docket and what were audited. So if.
It's not, it's, it's wrong.
So, so those are wrong.
Those, those numbers are definitely wrong and I'm, I'm telling you why. Because of maintenance of effort, we cannot give you less. John, do we have what? We probably have the numbers of what we gave them every year.
Which is where we.
Right.
Which is where we obtained them.
Which is where we obtained these numbers.
But then the same thing would be true between fiscal 16 and fiscal 17.
And then 17, 18.
Deb, it's all the way down. 21, we reduced it in 22 and we do, reduced it in 23. They got a 4% in.
No, that, that's not true.
That's not true.
Cause no, the 22 is 25 and 23 is 26. That's more.
And we're showing those increases there.
All right.
So we go, go from here to here. That's an increase.
Right, but right here is not.
21 and 17.
Okay, look at 20, Deb.
20 goes, there's a decrease from 20 to 21.
21.
Yep.
There's an increase, it's a decrease from 21 to 22.
No, there's no.
No, no.
No, there's no.
I'm sorry. I read, I read wrong.
No.
And then there's another increase to 23.
That's an increase.
That's an increase.
I'm just confused. Like, wouldn't Rye be breathing down our necks if this was accurate?
20 and 21 is incorrect.
So Rye wouldn't breathe down her neck. This is, um.
With the state legislator? I mean, because I know for us, for us, like hypothetically speaking, if we said, you know what? Last year we gave you a 26 and a half million. We think 21 million's the number, just, you know, picking a number. We would have to go and petition to the state to even allow us to, I mean, if we wanted to go, you know, 26, 5, you know, 5, 4, 7, 1, 5, 0. We would have to petition to the state for that decrease. Like we would not, we're not allowed by law to give you anything less than a dollar more than you got the previous year for the town contribution. So, and I don't, I mean, again, I'm, I'm going to assume that these numbers are, are accurate from what you pulled them from. But I, I don't know how that could possibly be the case because we have that maintenance of effort requirement.
So, so what happens if it is a petitioner budget?
They can't touch any, they cannot go below a dollar. The best they could do would be a dollar more than the previous year.
We would have to make it up.
But what if they did? We'd have to make it up.
We'd have to make it up. It would be declared, but, but even if they gave it to the town clerk, the lawyer looking at it would say it's wrong. This has happened before.
It couldn't go on, it couldn't go on the ballot.
Oh, yes. Don't you remember when we didn't put one on the ballot? Yeah. It, it has happened. Um.
I did not anticipate spending a lot of time on this slide.
Because I actually, 2021, you got quite an increase that year, if I remember. That was not a petitioner's ballot.
No, we doubt, I can confirm for you that. That was not a year that we had an increase.
I think it was the next year.
Yeah, I agree 2022, but I think 2021 you had, you did not get.
Is there a spot on the town website or clerk base where we would have the budgets?
The last two, I believe.
Look in the FTR.
Go ahead.
FTR.
Because Dave will remember this.
I don't, I don't have any sheets in front of me. I'm just going off.
So FY 22, last year.
I think one was a 3.6 and then a 4.0 last year.
Yeah.
Those are the two I remember.
FY 21 was 3.6.
That was Mike, I mean, Mike Decortis was on that budget committee.
FY 21 was 3.6.
And Deb, to your answer, even if it's a petitioner's and they put in a dollar, the town doesn't have to pick up anything else. It stays a dollar.
A dollar more.
Right, but if they try to decrease.
But if they decrease it.
Well, they can't decrease.
Right, exactly.
They can't.
But we have, we've had petitioners just kind of pull numbers out of.
But they still can't decrease.
They still can't decrease.
Yeah, they can't touch the schools, other than a dollar more.
So we've looked at that.
Yes. But Dave, what I'm remembering is 22 last year was 4%.
Yes.
And the year before was like a 3.8 or 3.6. That doesn't reflect this.
I don't, I'm, I don't have it. I don't know. And the year before that, I believe, was like a 2.8.
Yeah.
FY 21 was a zero.
I just remember the last two.
21 was a what?
A zero.
It was not a zero.
No.
No.
You haven't got a zero since way back.
2021 was not a zero.
No. It hasn't been zeros in a while.
All I can go back to, John, is, is FY 22 on the website.
But 2020.
There are other budget dockets.
Right, but you cannot tell me that 2021 you got zero, because I know you did it. I was here. I remember it. You did not get zero. Because we, and that, which one was the Sanford Mandels budget?
The one before that, the FY 20.
Four years ago.
Okay. After that, you did not get zero.
So why don't we do this in the sake of?
Well, it's very hard to make decisions based on numbers that don't make sense.
Let me give you some numbers that do make sense then. So if you flip a page in the presentation, and we'll certainly check those numbers.
John is checking something for me. Go ahead.
One number that you can tape with absolute is what the town contributed last year. So 26,547,151. That, that is absolute. I know you'll have that in your records as we do on ours. And the, the. And the, the school community, the school department's requesting a four percent increase, which, again, four percent of twenty-six million, five hundred forty-seven, one hundred fifty-one is one million, sixty-one thousand, eight hundred eighty-six. That's our request. We recognize that's the maximum amount you can allow to the schools. However, we want to point out to you that right now, the way state aid is being calculated, Tivon will receive three hundred fifteen thousand, two hundred seventy-two dollars less.
How much?
It's right, it's right on here.
Right here.
I'm coming up with like four hundred eighty-three thousand less.
State aid?
Yeah.
No, it's right here.
It's what's in the governor's budget.
It's in the, that's the governor's.
The governor's budget.
So that's different than what I was looking at here.
What are you looking at?
The revenue for, this is dated four fifteen twenty-three.
Where'd you get that?
That's in the.
Oh, it's in, yeah, it's in.
So the governor's budget is what we're working off right now, if you have actually new information.
Which is Operation Z, right?
I'm sorry?
Operations A.
It's state aid.
State aid for the schools, yeah.
What's that?
So what do you got projected for state aid?
Right now.
Right now, six, not, again, if you're looking at our presentation, the numbers there, six million, nine hundred twenty thousand, seven seventy.
So my guess is that they just kept, no, state aid last, state aid last year was six nine, almost seven, right?
Six, seven, seven.
The current year, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, current year, and we're showing on here six two.
Six nine.
No, I'm, on this document here.
Oh, I'm there, I'm sorry.
Almost six three.
Can we go?
I don't, I'm not sure what document you're looking at.
This is our, our revenue projection document.
Oh, the revenue, okay.
So it's higher on here, it's, yeah, it's an estimate, so, you know, this is built off, yeah, this is built off an estimate.
Yeah, they have not enacted the final state aid yet.
Right.
And last year, you actually received more, even though.
Yeah, we showed that.
It was going to be.
We showed that on the previous slide.
No, I'm just saying that might happen again this year.
Yeah, which is possible, we've, um.
I can say.
Get engaged with the legislature, legislature for that.
And I, we have the legislature, so I can actually say with you with great confidence that right now, as the state budget is calculated, that is the increase or the amount being allocated to Tivon. We met with Representative Edwards and a few other people, and they've all confirmed that number with us. So again, the important number for you folks is the four percent increase off of last year's contribution, which is a million, sixty-one thousand. That would bring the appropriation of the public schools at thirty-four million, five hundred twenty-nine thousand, eight oh seven. However, I want to point out to you that that's a two point two percent increase. When you factor out the loss of state aid with the four, it's an overall two point two.
Yeah, but to the taxpayers, they're being taxed four percent more.
Right.
So we need to keep that in mind, that's our responsibility.
So just so I'm clear, Peter, on, on your state aid row here, your net loss is about seventy-five, because you added in two fifty-one of additional money that came in? Six nine eight, plus two fifty-one was additional money that you got?
That was, that was additional.
Right.
Minus the three fifteen.
Then minus three fifteen, so your net's about seventy-five thousand.
Yeah.
Less, less, okay.
Seventy-five thousand less.
Less than the current year.
No, it's the three fifteen.
No.
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 You, you, you received initially six nine.
Six nine.
Plus two fifty-one.
Plus two fifty-one.
And then you subtract this three fifteen, so the net is about seventy-five.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's seventy.
And again, this, this doesn't play into the request that the school committee and administration is making a view of the four percent, but just for understanding that, again, we talk about that level service budget, right? And that's a thirty-six million dollar budget. If the appropriation was moved by you folks, and it was funded at four percent at thirty-four million, point, thirty-four point five, I'll use round numbers, again, we're looking at a structural deficit of about one point six million dollars. School department's not in any position to cut any more staff, and so I'll share with you that on the next slide, that the school committee does have at their disposal fund balance and Medicaid, close to that amount of the structural deficit, whether they'll allocate toward that, I'm not sure, I think it's the, I know it's the recommendation we're going to make. So again, makes that four percent budget really critical to us, because anything below that, there's not any money to cover it, that will drain these two accounts just to have level service right now.
Right, but you will be getting Medicare money for next year in.
Well, it comes in after the fiscal year, right?
Okay.
So this is a year old.
As of June third, twenty twenty-two.
Yeah. So, can we go, can we go back to this page real quick?
Yep.
Just because I pulled some of these numbers, so, like, for FY twenty-one, the total appropriation number is correct. We don't actually break out the town contribution piece on our documents, on the budget documents, the same thing goes, I'm looking at seventeen right now. There is, it looks like there's an error on seventeen, because FY seventeen has total appropriation of twenty-nine, seven, five, eight, nine, six, six, but what was passed was twenty-nine, six, two, three, two, two, four, and then.
For F, to the schools?
For FY seventeen, that's the budget document that, that we have. So like where it says, you know, proposal for appropriations and tax levies, the town shall appropriate a sum of twenty-nine million, six, twenty-three, two forty-four for school department, general operating capital expenses. I guess the question we have to answer, it probably needs to come from, from the treasurer.
Right, right, that's the appropriation.
Yeah, that's the to, that's the total appropriation.
Yeah, we have that, that's all.
Yeah, so, from the town contribution, like, I think we need to go back to probably the treasurer to find out what was actually sent over to the school department, and again, this predates your time here in the town, I think, right?
It does.
Yes. And if, if I recall, that may have been the timeframe where we were looking, like, there was general uproar, because the schools had accumulated like a four million dollar surplus. So I'm almost wondering if this is like a budgetary trick, where they said, hey, we're appro, we're appropriated X, our state aid came in higher, and then, as a result, we, our appropriation from the town is the delta between the total appropriation and state aid.
Which is correct.
Which, again, which is how you, how you would arrive at these numbers, but if the town is supposed to do a dollar more, like, maybe, maybe that's how they built the four million dollars prior to your administration, is taking those dollars, saying, well, we only got, you know, twenty-three, four seventy-five, and that's a net decrease of point zero six, but they took the, the delta and put it into the fund balance. I'm just, I'm hypothesizing, because the, the town contribution numbers have to go up by at least a dollar.
But John, but FY twenty to twenty-one, what is your reason, what, FY twenty, they have twenty-four, eight, six, seven, FY twenty-one, twenty-four, six, five, one.
I think, honestly, what we need, what we need to do.
I will check the numbers.
I think what we need to do is like to figure out what the, the town contribution piece would be, is to bounce that off of the treasurer, but also take a look at the lead-up to it, because, you know, if FY twenty-one, like, let's say the state aid was estimated at, you know, five hundred thousand dollars less than what was actually received, and to get to town contribution, all we're doing is taking total appropriation minus state aid, the state aid changed after the budget was already passed, then.
No.
No, it would be additional.
No, whatever is voted, like, what they say is state aid, and then they say what, what they want as an increase from us, that number does not change whether their state aid goes down or not. We don't make up the difference, or.
I, so I understand that, but for this, for this spreadsheet, if, if the business, you know, the business administrator is saying, hey, we took the total appropriation, we subtracted out state aid, and that's how we got to the number.
But that's not, that's not correct.
That, that would explain why these, that, so the, the town contribution numbers would be incorrect.
That's not correct.
Because of that.
The town contribution numbers would be incorrect then, because when we gave you the money, your appropriation from the state was lower.
Yeah.
So when you put in what you got, and you subtracted it from here, you really got more from us.
So the school, the, the town's contribution would have been higher, the delta is whatever we estimated the state aid to be at the time we came up with the thirty-two, one twenty-six, five, two, zero.
Your town appropriation is totally, is wrong, because what you did was, you took what your budget was, and you didn't count your increase, am I right?
So, so the, so the total, so in, in theory, if this, like, again, if the state aid came back half a million dollars higher, then your, your total appropriation number should be up by half a million dollars.
In addition, I have also tied these to the financial statement, so.
Well, I, maybe, maybe that's what they did.
Yeah, I think, I think what you have to do is look at the final budget document that was passed.
Yeah, you need to see what we voted, what the town voted on that day.
Right, but in terms of what.
That wouldn't show up in the audit.
Can I please finish what I was going to say?
Of course.
Um, so if the financial statements say that this is what was transferred from the town to the finance, to the school department, that's what we got, they would not exclude, the financial statements would not exclude any additional funds due to that calculation we were just talking about. So I will certainly go back, I will relook at these, and, like I said, I tied them out to the financial statements.
Financial statements would show your actuals, correct?
Right, actuals.
Okay, so we may, so the town may have approved X.
Mm-hmm.
But you actually spent a little bit less than X, and that's what the financial statement is pointing to.
Right, no, the, no, the transfers that go over are what the appropriation, the total appropriation from the town is, those are the actual.
Okay, so that wasn't, you didn't, so my question must, must not have been clear to you, because that's not how you answer my question.
So just, I did look at the audit books. The town contribution is a reflection of what's in the audit report.
Mm-hmm.
The audit report has a column for what was, um, actual, original budget, and then it has a column for total available, and then what actually was spent. And then there's a column that says the variance.
Right.
So in the case of, uh, twenty twenty.
Oh, so Joan, but they did receive the whole appropriation, but they didn't spend the whole appropriation.
No, no.
So what was the budget?
Make this year twenty-one. What was, voted on was twenty-four, three, three, five, six, eight, four, but what was spent was twenty-four, six, five, one, seven, five, two.
That's what was transferred from the town.
From the town to the school.
Mm-hmm.
And that's a variance of three hundred and sixteen thousand and sixty-eight cents. So even though it says we're budgeting this, they actually got more by three hundred and eight, sixteen thousand.
Which, but that's reflected here, that's what's in the financial statements.
And that's what this first column is, it's, it's what they actually got.
Was that when the state?
So it's, I gotcha.
So we budgeted this.
Yep.
They spent this, and the variance is this, they get spent more than what the town appropriated.
No, transferred, not necessarily spent.
Now, does state aid, state aid comes into the general fund, and then we transfer it to you, or does it go straight to your accounts?
No, it gets transferred to us from the town.
So there's your, there's your delta right there.
But this town contribution numbers are wrong.
No, they're not.
So what the town budgeted contribution numbers is correct, is incorrect.
Right.
What was actually contributed, it, so this is what's actually sent.
Right.
From the town, and.
But it's not.
And the variance, again, the variance, so the state aid would have been, and if we're talking budgets, the state aid, based off of what the clerk just said, we would have prob, we would have assumed that that state, uh, state aid number was three hundred and something thousand dollars lower when we came up with the thirty-two, one twenty-six, five, twenty.
But where did the money go that was appropriated by vote?
It's not in here.
It's not in here.
No, I, I mean, I think we'd have to ask the treasurer for this.
But I think it has to be in here, because it looks like the town did not give you an increase, and they did. The, the vote is voted for you to get a four percent increase.
So to be fair, I would add another column here.
Okay.
To show what was actually voted on.
Okay, I can do that.
And that percentage difference, and you're going to see a much different increase percentage from year to year.
Okay, I can certainly do that.
Because that's what voters look at, that's what voters look at.
But this is not wrong.
No, you're not wrong, it's just not.
It's not wrong.
It's not, it's not incorrect, it's just not, it's not from the budget perspective, perspective.
Well, and there was no, there was no intention to deceive or misconceive.
No, no.
It's, I was going by audited numbers, and that's what I went with.
We're, so we're talking, we're talking budget, and the, and so the town contribution, this is the actuals number, and if we're talking budget, we, we have no way to look historically at what was budgeted.
Right, and I can certainly add that column.
And that's where the increase has to be driven, yeah.
To make it clearer, absolutely, I'll put it to be the first column, and we can certainly revise this, I'm happy to do that.
Because to the public, when people look at this, they think that the town has decreased your contrib, what you've gotten.
Well, the actuals are.
But no.
No, the appropriated contribution is what is voted on by taxpayers.
The appropriation is not.
Your actual, I'm not, I don't know why the actual might be different, there's nuances in there that aren't evidence here.
There are nuances in there, correct.
But our actual appropriation is what is voted on by the voters, this year voted on by us and or.
Which, which I understand, but we don't necessarily get all of that appropriation.
Yes, you do.
No.
Yes, you do.
No, because we have the town contribution here from the audited numbers.
Well, we're going to have to bring our treasurer in, because if she's not giving you, you get the bottom line number. If she's not giving you that, then there's a problem here, but I don't believe that Denise is not giving you what's appropriate.
Well, and if you, if you look at the FY twenty-one that Joan talked about, you said that the appropriation was twenty, twenty-four, three, thirty-five, six, eighty-four?
I lost the page.
So that, the money.
Which is actually.
Twenty-four, three, three, five.
Six eighty-four, so what you show that year is twenty-four, six, fifty-one, so you received more that year.
Mm-hmm.
And that's what I want to figure out, what that delta is.
My guess is, my guess is state aid.
Yeah, yeah, probably.
But you can't put.
So you're mixing the two together in there.
But when you look at the percent increase, you can't put that the voters voted to give you a negative point eight seven, because I know for a fact they gave you three point six percent increase.
Well, to Mike's point, I can certainly add the column to add clarity. Well, to Mike's point, I can certainly add the column to add clarity.
But this looks bad when people in the community look at it, especially the school supporters say, look what, we, they gave them a negative, which is absolutely not true.
Well, there was no intention to deceive, I, I went by the actual audited numbers, which is my source of information. And, and no, to do anything arbitrary other than that, to me would be disingenuous, these are genuine, these are accurate.
So, so again, just for future. And if you can correct this, you know, we have to look, we have to look at what was approved by the voters up till this year, and then this year, whatever we approve unless there's a referendum that overturns us.
Right.
Whatever that dollar amount for the local contribution is, should be in your documents.
Okay, happy to do that.
And then it would, it would more accurately reflect what the voters agreed on, plus or minus the state aid, mostly minus. And so what the schools are actually running at, which is minus from the year before, because the state aid is less.
Mm-hmm, happy to do that.
I think it would, it would give a little track record, but it would also be important, so the, the voters voted on the bottom line number. And, and I had to say, and that's what the budget is.
I can hide it, it's right here.
Probably should also have the assumption remaining on state aid. So that you can compare what the town.
Happy to add whatever information.
I can literally, I can explain it right here because 33, 531, 278.
That the state came in less than the town.
This number, which is delta, which is different, and the difference is 251 from the state aid.
No, I'm happy to add whatever is necessary to provide clarity.
That's the issue.
Absolutely. I just wanna be, I just wanna.
Total appropriation percentage.
This is very different. This is what we estimated based off of state aid, if the state aid changes, that's what, that's what's going on.
Okay, I'm happy to do that, but again, I want to make it, you know, extra clear, there was no intent to deceive, there was nothing that was disingenuous. Again, I went with the audited financial statements as my base. So I just want to make that perfectly clear.
No, listen, I, I completely understand where you're coming from, and actually, I think there's an example, if we go back a prior page to the FY23 starting place, and then FY23 structural deficit page.
Yes.
So you have on the FY23 starting page, which again, this number, the 26, 547, 151 is reflected in, in that column as the local contribution. And you, we had an estimated state aid of 6, 9, 8, 4, 127, but what you actually got was 72, 36, 042. So when we look at total appropriated funds of 33, 783, 193, the, the number that the budget was, that the FY22 budget voters voted on was an appropriation of 33, 531, 278. And so the delta is literally the bump in state aid that we got, and so I think that's where the confusion's coming. Again, we're looking like almost 10 years in, in the history prior to you guys being here, so I understand that you're, you're just operating off of the information that you can find. And unfortunately, to, to get to the, I think, the, the numbers that, that we're talking about here, is we gotta like peel back the onion like 15 more layers.
And I'm happy to provide those onion layers, absolutely.
Just, just so anybody watching at home, it's not like we're accusing you of impropriety or anything, it's just, it's, this, it's just a function of the variances year to year in state aid, which in retrospect makes it look like the town contribution fluctuates plus or sometimes minus. When in reality, the town contribution, what was approved by the voters, was always a positive by at least a dollar, in some cases, it may have been a dollar. And the delta would have been the variance in state aid, so.
Correct.
We just, I think for the rest of the council, we just want to understand
Sure.
that, part of the equation, exactly.
Absolutely happy.
And the reality is that FY, we gave you, FY21, we gave you 3.6% increase, and FY22, you got a 4% increase.
So I'll certainly adjust the schedule and, you know, provide it, and that'll add clarity for everyone.
Yeah, perfect, thank you.
When did, the state aid formula changed in the last couple of years, correct?
It did.
Does it change like on a regular basis? It's whenever they?
Lacial.
They review it periodically, but.
And, and like when you, when you figure out, then they change it again, right?
Correct.
Well, and the formula, the formula didn't change, they added money to some cities and towns who would have been less than what they would have gotten under the formula.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And the governor talked during campaign that he really was supportive of special education, special needs, and I got a little excited, but it doesn't really seem that that's really helping us.
We actually got a bump in that category.
We got a bump, but not millions, not millions.
But not to cover the cost, right?
In the tens, tens of thousands, correct, Mr. Edwards?
Can I ask him three questions?
Can you ask as many as you like?
Three questions. Transportation, when's the contract being renegotiated?
For FY25.
Yeah, it was a three-year contract.
But they can come back anytime and wanna renegotiate?
They can.
As can we.
Okay, well, the reason I ask that is, you know what just happened in Providence? You can be sure the first student's gonna come back.
Well, they can come back, but they're under contract, doesn't mean we have to renegotiate.
Yeah, they'll just whack us in '25.
We've moved special education in-house.
All of our programs?
A big part of them.
No, no.
Majority of it?
As much as we can, yes. There's still, we still have 30 to 40.
Do we expect that to save us money, break even, or where do you see that?
We never do it for, for financial reasons, we do it for educational reasons, because we believe we can educate students to a greater extent in our school system, what our talented teachers, rather than sending them out. If there's a savings on that, then great, but our decisions are made on education.
But the children, the children who could not be serviced within Tiverton Portsmouth, you know, in the local area, who are going out, those students are still going out.
Oh, of course, we have about 40 students.
Because they have, they have, they have special needs that are, are greater than.
Yeah, they go to Bradley and places like that.
Correct.
Yeah.
And, and that's in your book here, there are decades on that.
Third question, how much of ESSR2 money is left?
None.
All gone.
All gone.
Did we ever get a breakdown of that?
I provided that to Dr. Larkin, I don't know if he passed that along to you.
He has not.
Okay, I, I gave that to him well over a month ago.
We'll send it to you directly.
Yeah, we can do that.
Is that in this packet?
There's some.
There's some, not all.
Oh, just the employee, the employee mark, yeah, okay.
We spent it on, and so I provided that to Dr. Larkin.
Can we just give an idea of what some of those items were?
What, we spent ESSR2 and 3 on? Personnel. I mean, it was.
Oh, personnel, nothing else?
Some curriculum, some, limited, I mean, I, you know, if you go back to the page that I'm showing you, the million, 80,000, that was probably the largest portion of ESSR3. And again, that was filled into.
And that's actually a little bit more than that, just with adjusted benefits, it's okay.
I mean, that's, you know, we.
It was personnel and updated curriculum.
Any technology for
Yep.
virtual learning and things like that?
Yes, absolutely, which is why. All right, so let me bring you back, I know we'll, we'll readjust a chart for you and all that. One number, again, I'm gonna go to the chart that says FY24 budget executive summary. The 26,547 is a number that you allocated last year, as I know that.
It's on the budget plan here.
And so that makes the 4% request number accurate. And again, I know that's really where we want to make sure your attention is on, and, and that's what the request is. Again, we went through the structural deficit, the point I'm trying to make there is that anything less than 4%, the school committee basically has enough funds to cover the structural deficit, anything after that, it's gonna just mean we're gonna cut, and, and that's a place we don't want to be. The next page I'm gonna speak to is FY24 budget summary, our budget is very easy to understand, and hopefully the budget book elucidated that for you. But 71% is in this section called Personnel. If you take, and then when you go to expenses, if you take the codes that are listed there for energy, that's 3.42%. If you take the codes listed for special education, which is required, and I certainly think energy is required, it's almost 13%. The codes for transportation comes in at 7.48%, again, that's non-modifiable. Technology is 1.60%, which again, I don't believe that's modifiable, that's 96.13% of our budget, right there. That other 3.87%, maintenance, legal, trash removal, in a small amount, to do the business of education, so. You know, when you look at our budget book, hopefully it's, it's become really easy to understand, there's not a lot of drills in here. The money is spent on people, our most valuable asset, and energy, special education, transportation, technology, which is all required.
I do have a question, you had a fund balance this year of over a million, correct?
Correct.
Where, where is that money right now?
In the fund balance.
You haven't done anything with that money?
We've done nothing with FY24, or have we done anything with the Medicaid funds, which is why they're being allocated for FY24, hopefully by the school.
But the, but the fund balance is not being allocated for FY24?
Hasn't been yet, that's our request.
It has not yet been, but we're gonna be asking the school committee to do so.
We've made a request to do that, so we don't.
Okay, so it's, it's not reflected in here?
It is, it's a slide in there.
No, not Medicaid, oh, the fund balance, but you haven't done anything with that?
Right.
Not yet, no.
Great question, so again, I would say to you that the reason why we didn't touch fund balance or Medicaid last year is the page on the ESSR funds, because we had ESSR funds. If we didn't have the ESSR funds, I hate to think where we'd be right now if we didn't have fund balance and Medicaid, we'd have a big problem. So let me just kind of finish this up, there's a page now I'm speaking to, it's called FY24 Personnel Benefit Summary, so again, 71% of our budget is people. And I wanted you to understand the increase in that section of our budget, steps, lanes, non-contract employees, minor amounts, that's all contractually mandated. The biggest thing impacting this are the positions we funded under ESSR3. We don't want to cut those positions, so they're in our budget. The, I gave you a quick summary of who we employ, some numbers there. Then the other part of our budget, again, just flipping through this, is expenses, anything outside of personnel, it's 29.31%. The increase is 741, and then the next slide shows you where that increased, so again, I want to make the point that we're not doing a lot educationally. We're increasing energy, transportation, insurance, things that we have to increase, the technology increases for our systems that run the district, that communicate to RIDE, that communicate with parents and things like that, it's a must-have. So our increase in, in expenses outside of people is not anything extravagant at all. And I just want to give you a quick overview of the school system, so based on October 1st of this year, we had seven, 1,780 students. And I want to give you an understanding who these students are that we educate every day, so 21% of our students live in poverty. 13, 14% are minorities, 20%, 19% are special ed.
Is that what's that, with, compared to the state average?
It's a little higher.
Pretty close, a little higher?
504, so you can see almost 7%. Like 1% of our students don't speak English, a very small percentage of our students are homeless, and a small percentage are military families, so. But if you take those top categories, those students generate needs, and those needs have to be met by a school system, either through special education, reading specialists, math specialists, all the program that, that we do. Now, we're fortunate then, that for a couple of years, we haven't cut staff, and we want to certainly maintain that this year, and I'm just gonna share with you some of the successes of the school system. And the reason I'm doing this is that when the schools are appropriately funded, and we have the personnel that we need, we can produce best, great results. There is no doubt that this district can be one of the best districts in Rhode Island, and we're starting to move, we're seeing great successes there. So the first slide there is our graduation rate, we paid a lot of attention to that, we were fortunate last year to get it up, everyone walked the stage, one of the highest in, in the state. And this year, we're on track again to be in the high 99, 98%. Next couple of slides are rather interesting.
So how do you do in terms of cohorts? So the cohort that would graduate this year started in 2019? Or is it, it's, 18?
Yes, 18, 19.
What's your anticipated graduation rate for that cohort?
This year's?
Yeah.
Right now, it's at 98 point something percent.
And the state is?
I'd have to look that up, Mike, I don't want to give you a number.
I think it's around 80 or so.
Yeah, it's way above it. And the thing, not only we are graduating.
Good job.
Thank you.
That's, that's why I asked that question, because I knew about what the state rate is, but.
But the next slide shows you, not only are we graduating kids, we're moving kids on, so the first slide, I know I got cut off the title, but that's the percentage of students going on to post-secondary education in the state. So the red line is 69, it dropped 64, 62. Well, then you look at Tiverton's, and, you know, our percent of kids going on to post-secondary college education, 72, 69, and 74%, so basically, we defied the odds of the pandemic. And part of that is because we kept our students in school, we didn't do hybrids, we didn't do alternate schedules or anything like that. We know this community counts on our school system to be open for our families, and we did. We went out March because we were required, but we came back in that September of '20, and we stayed open for 180 days. And again, you're gonna see that play out in a couple of other slides that I'm gonna show you.
And, and Peter, just again, I'm sorry, so the dip in 2020 is nor- was the normal dip across the country, really?
Across the state.
Across the state.
Yeah, but even our dip was less than the state's dip.
Right, right, because there was a dip because of COVID, and then when you talk about post-secondary, some people think that's just four-year college.
Any college.
Right, including trade schools?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. One of the programs we put in place because of ESSR is a bridge program at the middle school, and I love to show this one off, because it's really made a difference, and we're looking forward to the result it's gonna produce this year. The first slide that line chart shows chronic absenteeism, that's more than 18 days absent, and it's the high schools in black, middle schools in the maroon color, and the elementaries are in blue, and you can see that's what their absentee rates were last year. Again, you know, the pandemic certainly had a big impact on that. We put in place this bridge program at the high school, you can see a quote there from a doctor at Bradley Hospital that recognized us in a couple of things. But the next slide is the thing that's, you know, we want to share with you. This is off the RIDE website, and if you look at the green box, that means that on February 27th of last year, students had missed 4,174 days of school. And so our administration there said, you know, we can't educate them if they're not here, right? So we put the bridge program in place, and on that same date, a year later, 3,105 days, which means we picked up 1,000 days. And that's because we got people reaching out to families, bringing kids in, have a special program aligned there at the middle school, so we think that's gonna produce some pretty good results this year. And then I'll close, just sharing with you, you've already heard me say, we stayed open in 2021, when a lot of districts didn't, and I think that shows in our RIDE CAS scores. So I'm showing you first, grade three, comparing our three schools to our neighbors in some of our like communities, you can see how well our students did. And then you flip, and it's grade three math, and you can see our students did exceptionally well. And then you can just follow the pattern, it's grade four ELA. Again, we had some really excellent results there, and grade four math. And what that all led to is one of our schools was recognized by the Commissioner of Education as a Blue Ribbon School, and they, and they received that designation this year. We have another school up again this year, so. Again, the point is, I love sharing our successes, but I want to tie it back to budget, is that when we're appropriately staffed, we can produce amazing results, so. I'll close, certainly continue with your questions, is the key number is, we know that the contribution from last year is 26,547,151, and the request is 4% on top of that, which is 1,61,886. And with that number, we still got some scrambling to do, but we, at least we have a solution.
Any questions?
I know you're, you've got the plug, if you will, with the Medicaid and the fund balance for this year.
For '24.
Eve, I'm sorry, for '24. But that's a recurring structural. How do you anticipate eventually, even if it's a, this year this much, this year, next year that much, eliminating that structural? Because we are bound by that 4% at the most.
I don't know, Mike, I wish I could tell you a good answer to that, because again, I'll, in your, in your budget, in the book I recreated for you, there's that list of staff that we've eliminated the last three years, right? But the staff is part of it, like, we stripped our expense accounts, so what I would say to you is, if we're facing cuts again, like, we can't strip expense anymore, we're at bare bones. Again, it's transportation, special education, and energy, very limited beyond that, and again, you can look at the teachers that we cut, the staff members that we cut, and I don't know how deep it'll go there.
So you, because of the way it was, the direction it was going, you pulled out of the special ed regional?
Correct.
As of the end of this year?
Correct.
Do you anticipate that helping with costs?
Minor, we've got it under 100,000.
Okay.
But you know, you know how one kid moves in?
Right. Right.
That, that's more focused on providing a higher quality education, we think we can do it better here in Tiverton, and sharing expenses or revenues with other people.
How many students offhand out of district?
Out of district total, I'd say it's in the 40s, but we have a little.
Is that in here?
Is that out of district that are coming back, or let's, out of district?
No, they're in like a Portsmouth, Bradley Portsmouth, that type of program.
I can get this.
I think it's in here.
You don't have to, I just was curious.
I do have one question. You said you cut teachers, I looked at a number, I don't know if it's in here, someone showed me something. The amount of teachers you had last year, you have less this year? You can show me where you have less teachers, because.
Well, I would say it's off staff members, if you use the correct terminology.
So it's not teachers?
It's a combination of teachers.
Again, go to your budget book.
Is it in here, because that might be where I looked at it.
You go to the Personnel tab, and then you, we have a nice picture of our, our teacher, and then sort of a quick overview page, but that third page in then?
The Personnel budget I'm looking at?
Yeah.
Go to the, uh, third page in, right there.
You have that listed. So you can see the positions that were cut, what was brought back through ESSR.
Right, so what I'm saying is, how many positions less do you actually have?
31.7.
You're 31 people missing from last year?
Not, well, no, this goes back to FY21.
All right, I'm talking, because last year, you said you were gonna have to lay off all these teachers.
Right.
In reality, did you really?
No, we showed you a slide that shows ESSR3 paid for those positions we would have laid off, so we know we didn't lay off.
So to answer your question, from '22 to '23, we have the same number of positions, we'll say teachers, thanks to ESSR funding.
Okay, that's my question, how about from '21 to '22? Do you have that, that's kind of a hot?
Yeah, we have it right here.
So for, uh, from, so we, um, in '21, in terms of, I'll say positions, because that's what my information is here, so we had 262.3 FDEs. And from '21 to '22, we went to 245.7, with seven additional, thanks to ESSR2 funds.
So every year, despite the fact that you say you have to lay off, you don't in reality do because of these extra funds you have.
When they're available.
But that is correct what I'm saying, so.
Well.
When, so you really have not laid off teachers in the last, well, you may have laid them off, but you brought them back in the last two years.
So let me call your attention to that page that I keep referencing, and let's go, it's three columns, right? So FY21, and there's a list of people there, it's 23.2 FDEs, we cut those positions. In FY22, we brought some of those positions back, they're coded under ESSR2, but below that, starting with high school guidance, we cut those positions. So those are absolute, anything that's cut.
Those are gone.
They're gone, well, but then you go to FY23, and we may have brought some of those positions back under ESSR3, but overall, do we cut a number of positions? Absolutely.
But you, in reality, brought them back at some point?
Not, not 31.7, no, you, you can count, there's like eight positions there.
And was that because your need, even though you cut them, you're doing well still, we've just looked at your numbers, your graduation rates and everything. What I'm trying to get at is, we all have to make some kind of financial decisions to still run a good organization, but find ways to save money. And what I'm saying is, the ones you cut did not really show any kind of failure as you're moving on. As far as educating your students and your, your, your rate of graduation, I just.
I don't really think you can judge impact in that way either, I mean, you know, do we have a culinary program anymore? No. Does that hurt kids? It does. Do we have as much guidance culture? No, does that hurt kids? You can't quantify some of that stuff.
I just feel the town is, the town itself has gotten a lot less than 4% in the last few years. And we're in contracts, and we try to, we, we try to do the best we can, but the town has gotten 2% and even less, and we've been giving you much. the town has gotten 2% and even less, and we've been giving you a higher. But at some point, the town needs to bring up some of our services, because we look for money under the cushions in order to do what we're doing now.
As do we.
Okay, but our percent increase is so much less than you. And the fire department needs a lot of different things for safety. The police do. We do, we go through grants, the police department.
As do we.
It's unbelievable. Could you just let me talk for a minute? Okay. So I, I know that you need 4%, but the town also needs money also, and it's a balance. It's a balance, because people do not want their taxes to go up this much. And it's just, we've been giving you very significant increases. The town has voted very significant increases, and the Budget Committee has recommended it. But at some point, we have to look at the needs of the town and say, well, maybe you need to get a little less this year so we can bring our services to where we feel they should be. And that's, it's not that I don't think you deserve the money, but we're, we're, we're one whole community, and we have to look at the other side of this also. I think the town people have been very generous to the school department in the last two to three years. And I think also, the town has decreased our costs, so you could get the amount you got. But at some point, we have to look at that. And that's just my opinion. And I'm not saying that you don't deserve it, but we have to look at the town as a whole and decide as a whole, what can the taxpayers afford. And that's just my final statement. Any other questions?
I do have a question. So the Medicaid money that we get, that's for billing for services, kids' special needs. What's the percentage, because they're not all billed, I know that, or we don't collect on all of them. What's the percentage that we collect Medicaid versus, you know, to cover the special needs, probably the ancillaries?
So the family has to be on Medicaid for us to collect, and they've got to disclose that to us. And once we know that, then we can bill for the services. So you're asking me the percent overall of the services provided, how much we get reimbursed back? Is that, is that, because I want to calculate if I don't have the answer, but I wanted to know.
I'm just, I didn't know if you knew, like, you know, we, we get half of it back, 50% or?
Not even.
Not even.
It's probably.
It's a small number is what I...
Like, if I had to ballpark it, and again, we can certainly get you the actual number. If it's greater than 2%, I would, I would be shocked in terms of Medicaid. So for example, throwing out a number, our special needs total cost is between, say, four and five million. Every year, we only get a few hundred thousand at most.
It isn't always special needs. It could be a student that needs, you know, ambulatory thing, or it could be on a 504, but if they're on Medicaid and we provide the service, we can bill.
So per service, it's what, 20%? If, if I had a service, speech therapy?
Speech.
That was being billed out to Medicaid?
Yep.
How much of that service gets, not the total dollar amount, because the total dollar amount is different?
I don't have that available, but I can get it.
We'll get it.
And then the total dollar amount is what you're saying, is, you know, if you spend 5 million?
Yeah, I, I just know from the hospital point, we get very, very little.
Very small.
For what we provide.
Correct.
And I'm working out of Massachusetts, but I can't imagine it's very different. It's, it's like a dollar amount that you get, and it doesn't matter if you provide three services, three hours. It, it doesn't really matter. So it really, everyone thinks we have this huge Medicaid fund, and it's really a very small percentage of what we're actually providing. And just, just for the, like, just a very subjective thing, I do know someone who does provide services in the, the whole Newport County, and she does rave about Tividin's services. So not unhappy that everything's coming back into town.
Thank you.
And you hired a very good special ed director, too.
Thank you, because we did.
Is she special ed or per pupil personnel?
Student services.
Student services.
Everything under that umbrella.
Okay, so homeless, all that?
Homeless, 504s, all that. Anyone who works in the SEL field, psychologists, all those people there. Yeah, throw a few other responsibilities, too.
Okay, good. That's good use. I'm going to throw this out there, not suggesting it's what, none of us have talked about this, but 1% of your, of, from our contribution from last, the current year, is about $265,000, right? Give or take?
Touch your math.
So if we were to decrease by that much, what would you have to do? And you might not have that answer right now.
Well, I can tell you what it is. So...
And I'm not suggesting we're doing it.
No.
It's a different level, absolutely.
Well, I, I know where you're going, this, Mike, and I appreciate it, because you have an unenviable task to try to balance the town, and I appreciate that. But as you do that, I think you have to understand impact, right? And I think you're trying to get at what the impact is on the schools, right? So we're, we're requesting 1,61,886. And you're saying you want to take how much off of that?
Say 1%. About 265.
265. So as of, and let's say state aid stays the same. So I showed you that we have a structural deficit and basically have matching funds for Medicaid and fund balance that would cover that. So you're going to add to that structural deficit, and we don't have a solution. So that amount of money means I go here and cut.
Here, just so people, people can't see what you're...
Personnel, right. And we can't cut expenses anymore. They're, they're just, they're gone. So 261,000, that's four positions, five positions?
But is that counting your fund balance of 1 million?
Yes, that's in addition to.
That's in addition to the 1 million fund balance also?
Yeah, he's saying that the school committee accepts their recommendation for the fund balance use and the Medicaid use to cover the structural deficit. So it would be additional 265.
We've made that recommendation.
Yeah, but is that what he's saying?
Yeah. What I'm saying is, if you...
Is that used in the 1 million? That's what I'm asking.
Yes. If you provide 4%, and the school committee uses the fund balance and the Medicaid were balanced, anything below that, we're scrambling, we're cutting. To your point, Mike, you know, what's next year's going to be? I don't know. It's going to be draconian, but we'll get there when we get there. This year, we'd like to stay where we're at and not cut anybody.
Any, any other questions? All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Anything else you need, let us know, please. We'll provide, we'll redo that document.
And here's our colleague, Dr. Markin, to provide that information to you.
No, because I guess that was a miscommunication.
It is.
Yeah, and that has to be fixed.
I haven't actually almost done my hand here, so.
Oh, all right.
That's why I've been quiet this whole time. Yeah, I'll take a picture and shoot it to you. I'm just pulling it right off of the budget documents, but you got to go like, you got to go buried into like where, find where the estimates are for state aid, and that's what the number is, so.
Thank you so much.
No problem.
It's my turn yet? No. I'm teasing.
That's all we have left.
Look how anxious he came.
Thank you for making time.
All right, so you have a big chunk here. And let me just get to it. Okay, so page 10, Public Works. No, none of, you're, we are still in negotiations. So, so the increases, there's no increase.
On the salaries, there's been no increases, and there is a note on the backup, as we did last year, Denise. Hopefully, it's going to be in the contingency.
Yes, it will be. Yes, it will be. Okay, so...
I think there is on Chris's, an increase based on a projection.
Yeah.
This is the same thing. So Chris has built it in?
On some, on some.
On some.
Well, Chris has built it in on maintenance workers. We...
And the clerk?
Yeah, well, I know what he did. Ask me.
Oh, okay.
Because we're pretty close.
Oh, okay.
So the clerk is ask me.
Yes, and, and I, I'm not sure Denise...
The maintenance workers are ask me.
Yes, but I'm not sure mathematically. I don't have the latest, but I have one that was handed out at the end of March. And I think that one had only a one-year factor in it, which would actually be for this year, not next fiscal year, which is what we're working on right now. So for instance, if, if the, if the rate was 100, I think it was only multiplied by one increase, not two.
He has the same numbers in the March one. These are the March numbers?
All right.
So all on...
Right, but the reflection in the maintenance workers, that's everyone. That's all your workers?
Yes.
Okay, but there is a two ask me. You, no, the town employee, the town maintenance doesn't go under you? Yeah, it doesn't?
Yes, yes, it does.
Okay. So that's what that reflects, the ask me increase?
If you're talking about 5540, 5101, no, that's because landfill transitioned over to 5100, 5540. 5530, most of those items transitioned into 5540.
5101, 5530.
So you'll see a corresponding decrease in 5530.
But the increase that's reflected here is not really true, because we haven't...
So go to the next page. See all that? Zeroed out?
So all the landfill, all the landfill salaries.
Yeah.
And personnel costs.
Okay.
So, so there's only three items.
I get it.
Oh, well, two items, actually. One would be 5540 clerk, and one would be 5130 salaries. So those, those would show an increase. Those, only those two line items, I believe, would show an increase on Chris's budget.
I see.
But I think, when I did the math, that it's only for one fiscal year, and it should be for two fiscal years.
Why? This is only one fiscal year?
Well, I, because I believe the contract ended in fiscal year '22, and we're already in fiscal year '23, and what we're working on is fiscal year '24.
But that's assuming we pay retroactive.
Oh, oh, yes, yes, exactly. And I, it's not my decision.
Yeah, that's what's assuming. Well, we don't know yet. We're still in negotiations. We're still in negotiations, and we don't know what we're going to do. But you're doing the reg, okay, but we don't even, we have no idea what, what the increase will be over there yet, at all.
That is correct. And I just, I only wanted to point out that the contingency fund would have to figure in something.
Right, and, and that's what we've always planned on doing.
Rick, you said 5130? I don't see a 5130.
Yeah, that's building maintenance division.
That's page 11.
I look. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm looking. It's the main item. Never mind. Sorry.
Trouble with Rick, we got to look at three different spots.
Okay. And then your operating expenses went way up. Oh, that's because, why is that?
I can mention, if, if you like, I can mention some.
Well, why snow removal contract service is that far up?
And, and that's a, a safety issue. I'm obviously not here to discuss negotiations, but one thing that, that I will mention is that safety has been mentioned, and that historically, the town used to have independents help out with snow removal.
And we do now. We've approved that.
Right, but they disappeared over the years because they weren't being called. Before I got here, they went to a three-inch rule. Everybody dropped out. So we've been working towards getting people to commit. They will only commit if you actually call them. They won't assign a truck and a driver to you if you say you have to be available, but we're not necessarily going to call you. They'll go somewhere where they're going to get called.
Yeah.
So in an effort to have things safer, because we want to reduce excessive work hours, being worked overtime by the, by the road crew, by DPW employees, we have increased that we've worked hard towards getting people to sign up with Tividin to plow snow, to sand, and to keep them, you have to give them, you have to call them. They won't commit otherwise.
Regardless of how much snow?
Right.
So it could be half an inch. You have to call them?
No.
Well, I mean, off hours.
Off hours, off hours, yeah.
If, if it's snowing from, you know, it's half an inch of snow from 10:00 AM to, on a Monday through Friday.
You got it.
We do that. But you have to give them the hours that say, okay, you'll, you'll be called.
And if you call me, is there a minimum?
Oh, yeah, there's a, yeah, but that's not usually a problem, because it takes us two or three hours to do a route, and the minimum is four.
Okay.
But Rick...
But last year they...
Last year, we gave you 79,600. Can you really want to almost double that now?
I, I actually ran the budget two different ways, and one number was 135, and one was 181. And I chose...
But that's saying, that's saying we're, we're going to have...
That's not covering all the routes. That's just being able to have some of the...
But is this saying that they're here all the time?
No, it depends on, for instance, this year, we, thank God, we only had six snow events. Last year, we had 12. You never know how many you're going to have. And last years were a lot longer. There was at least one that went from Friday, 8:00 PM, to Monday, Sunday morning at 6:00 AM. So it was about 32 hours. And you never know. It's the same thing with the sand and the salt. You never know what you're really going to use, because we can't control the road.
Your actuals last year were about 25, even though it was a heavier year. Was that because you couldn't get the contractors?
Yes.
And this year was 15.
Yeah, that's because it kept going down. I don't know, maybe the 2018 or 2017 or whatever it was, when they made the rule, they kept dropping and dropping and dropping. So one year, we had one guy. And what happens is, the crew has to work excessive hours, and it's not safe.
So your overtime would be up.
Right, and it's just not safe. So we're trying to have the ability and maintain that ability that we worked at this year, and we had people sign up, because thank God it wasn't a lot of snow. But we called them every time we needed to, every time it was an off-hour event.
We had six, correct? Did we have six, six guys this year?
We had five.
Five?
So, you know, part of the problem with this is, it's a lot like insurance.
Right.
Right, but...
You know, you don't know if you're going to need it, but you better have it.
But wouldn't your overtime come down?
No, not necessarily, because you never know what it's, what it's going to be. And our problem is, if we have a mild winter, that's not the problem. If we have a mild winter, the town keeps the money. But if we have a bad winter, we have nowhere to go to get the money to get the salt, to get the snow removal. And, and that also, that item covers also the drivers who drive the town trucks. Again, trying to reduce the excessive workouts for a safety point of view.
6451 covers your drivers, too?
No.
No, no, no. The, the guys who drive, the licensed drivers who drive.
I just think that's a little high, to tell you the truth. I, I think that's a, I, I know, but we...
Well, I, I know what you're saying.
Putting it back into the general fund almost every year.
Yeah, I know, but the, the problem is, and as, as I mentioned, the, I ran the numbers two different ways, and I actually picked the lower number.
So when you say that, how, how did you run it two different ways?
I did it based on the, the number of snow events that we had last, not this winter, last winter, and multiply it by the hours. And then another way I did it was just based on last year's with the independents. And it still came out, one was, the higher number was 181, and the lower number was 135. And the, the issue is, there's a multiple issue, but one is, the biggest one is safety. But the second one is, I have nowhere to go if it's a terrible winter. I have to have...
Well, you do. You can come to us, and we'll find the money either in contingencies
We'll have to find the money. We're going to clear the roads.
I think you'd be, I think that's too high. I'll be really, really honest with you. I think that's too high. I, I think you're, and I'm...
About 110.
Lower.
Lower. I, I would go to no more than 100, really, because...
And I, I understand why you're recommending that to us completely. You know, that's your job.
Yeah, yes, I have to give my argument, because that's the way, I, I have to be responsible. But I understand, I don't make the fine... But I understand, I don't make the final decision or recommend.
And Mike, but we also have our workers that are gonna be out there working also, so we're not gonna be using them all the time. Because if we have a eight-hour snow event, we don't even have to use them.
Well, it depends on when it falls, and it also depends on how many hours that people can work safer.
And this is say if they're available. If they're not available, our workers have to be out there anyway.
Well, no, that's one of the reasons we, we make them commit, just all the municipalities and the state do, you.
So you're gonna sign, if I'm the operator, you're gonna sign a contract with me that says, "I'll be available," but you are also committing to making sure that you call me in for at least four hours.
Exactly, otherwise, they'll go somewhere else. And that was the problem.
Dave, you have a question?
Yeah, the, no, not a question.
Okay.
The way Chris explained it to us was that, that number was there, and the reason it was there is, that would save you in the overtime number, and that's why the overtime number stood at 56,000.
Yeah, so what I'm saying is that overtime, that overtime number should go down.
That's $40,000 more.
Right, but what I'm saying is, that overtime number should go down then, if that is true. That's what I'm saying. But I think 100,000, but Rick, keep in mind, we have to find the money, we, we have to get the money, and we will. We, we have person, like, right now, you're one man down, and your personnel account is high. We do a lot of transferring within your budget, and then within the other, because we can transfer this money around quite a bit. So I think.
Well, most of, most of his transfers, like, that we've done this year, have been moving money out of the landfill over to the general office, but that's just because the landfill closed, you know?
Right, so I think that 100,000 is okay. We're, we're giving you 35,000 less, and like Mike said, we're obligated to pay it, and we will pay it.
You're talking 6451, 135 to 100?
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry, I was just making sure my calculations were right.
I know what you're doing, and I wanna look at that later, but.
And of course, I like to give my, my plugs, so I, I understand.
You give a lot of plugs.
I, I understand that.
And you're very well knowledgeable in it, but we have to, well, you've heard the requests that are coming in, and we, like, quite frankly, we have to reduce this budget, so we're trying to figure out a way to do it.
I mean, you gotta cut some out of sand, salt, and gravel too, I'd assume, right?
Yeah, that's, has, has sand, salt, gravel gone up that much?
Well, the.
It's gone up quite a bit.
The backup data does explain that better than, than I could, but I'm happy to work at that whenever you want, and show you that.
You know, sand, salt, and gravel, and I know it's been a really.
We got lucky.
Right.
But El Nino is back, so I don't know what that does to the weather patterns.
You have a remaining balance in there of 96, 7,000 right now.
But, but again, that's, when you look at past years, and we blew through the, the budget, and salt didn't used to increase the way it is now. Salt in fiscal year 21 was 47, and fiscal year 22 was 64, and fiscal year 23 was 75. That's an average increase of 30%. So, it's, if that continues, and what we did, we simply counted the tons that we did in fiscal year 22 for salt and sand, estimated a modest increase on sand, but put in the projection of what it has been doing on salt, and that's why you end up with that number. And we don't, that's, that's using fiscal year 22 tonnage. That's not saying, okay, that's what we might use. That's just using a, a reasonable number, like, all of them are reasonable, but that's only 1,700 tons.
How many?
But that's saying that we have a blizzard every day.
No, fiscal year 22 was not great, but it wasn't terrible.
Well, and sand, salt, and gravel is more than just the snow, too, so.
Right, so.
Ice events.
But from 2020, from 2122, you're more than, you doubled that amount.
You added 100 grand.
Well, yeah, but, but salt, Denise, went from 47, salt went from $47 to, is projected at a 30% increase, which is what the average has been the last two years, it's gone to double, more than double. The salt price will more than double.
But every year, you have a, I mean, I know this year has been no snow, it's been ice, and you've sanded. Out of the money you requested, and I'm, I know I'm looking at this right, just, yes, you requested 125, and you have 97,000 left.
It was a good year.
It was a good year, but this is, that's a lot of money that's going right into the general fund that we've taxed people for.
Well, we're gonna.
This is not a restricted account.
We'll wind up using it this year to offset the increases, you know?
No, it's gonna disappear. It, it's going in the general fund.
But what I mean is, it's, so it's going, it's going in the general fund, will likely take some money out of the general fund to lower the numbers here, so it's 601 and a half dozen the other, I guess.
I would like to decrease that, though, a little bit.
The, but the, my, one little more plug is, if it's a terrible winter, we get blown out of the water, maybe to the tune of $150,000, because you have the sand salt, you have the overtime, and you have the independence.
But that doesn't.
And it's hard to come up with any money after the fact.
I would like.
This year, you used 1,700 tons?
Uh, no, fiscal year, I don't know, this fiscal year 23?
You couldn't use much, you have 97,000 left.
This year, we didn't use that much, but fiscal year 22, which is, was a regular year, was 1,700 tons.
Okay, round figures then, projected, you could use as much as $85,000 worth of salt.
I think we should decrease it to 150.
Round numbers.
But if you, if you did just salt, and you cut the 17 number down to 1,000, you'd still be at 97,000 just for salt. If you took the $1,700 fiscal year 22, and prayed for a fantastic winter again, and went down to only 1,000, which is just a little more than half, if you cut it almost in half, you'd still have $97,000 in salt.
All right, I'm thinking 150 or 140, because actual for 2020, 122, you spent 137. So I'm thinking 150 or 140, but I do have, but if we have a mild winter, I think we should go 150.
Chances are, we probably won't have a mild winter.
Right, so 150 would.
Yeah, if we leave this number at 193, it'll be a very mild winter. If we cut this number, we're gonna get, we're gonna get just snow upon snow.
So why don't we say 150, and I think that would be good.
And if we save anything, some of it ends up in the paving.
I'm almost thinking in my mind, but I don't know if we could do this, or we could think about this in the future, to make this a restricted account.
Yeah.
To make this a restricted account, and it makes sense, we use sand and gravel every year.
Yeah, just roll some forward, and then we lower the budget the following year.
So think about it this year, 96 would've went in there, and we would've only had to put 50,000 in there.
There could be years when you didn't have to put any in.
I'm, I'm gonna write myself a little note to talk, talk to Mike, to see if we can do this.
And I appreciate all the consideration that you give DPW.
Yeah, but I have to get a resolution and everything.
I'm not gonna belittle the point, but I would, would say that in fiscal year 22, the actual was 137.
Yep.
And the price was only $64.
I know that.
We project the price of salt to maybe be $97.
Oh, 97?
But Rick, we can't, we can't, well.
What's salt at now?
I think 190.
Salt, salt was 47, went to 64, and went to 75. So if you take those averages, you're looking at 90-some dollars.
I used the wrong number.
I have a, I have a question on that.
My question is, Rick.
Wait, wait, is, if I just say one thing, though?
Yeah.
If, if we put the resolution on the ballot this year.
Yeah.
And Monday night, we're gonna talk about resolutions, then 94,000 is going to go into this account if we decide to do this.
No, it'd be for this, the resolution would be for the next budget cycle, right?
Right, it would be for 20, it would be for what we're discussing right now, 23, 24. If we put it on the ballot, yes, it would.
No, 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 so, but the dollars, the dollars we have today wouldn't be restricted, it'd be next year.
Right, you can't restrict.
Oh, you're right.
Yeah, we can't retro it, unfortunately.
Right, but let's, go ahead, Dave.
My only quest, question is, Rick, is the, is the bin full now, or is it?
Yes, we, we.
It's full.
No, no, it's full, we try to keep it full at the end of the.
Because I was gonna say, if you get $97,000 left, I'd fill that thing right up to the roof right now.
Well, that's what I, yeah, that's a good idea.
How much does that hold?
I actually don't know that, Deb, and I understand what you're saying, Dave, but I would say off the top of my head, oh, now we get to 83.
You got the money, and that's who'll spend it, fill it up.
Could we put it somewhere else, eh?
Put it somewhere else, for that, for that price.
The.
Rent somewhere.
500, 10, 300, no, I would say.
They'll buy it now, is that what he said?
Buy it now, and put it, put it.
It's gotta be cheaper in the summertime, or soon, right?
Why don't you buy it now, and put it, and make sure you buy a lot now?
Do you have storage?
Because you have 96,000 left.
You gotta have a place to put it.
Well, yeah, we, we'd love to, and I'll check the, it's a great idea, and I'll check the regs, but I thought that the reg was you have to have it undercover, which is why we have to solve.
Yeah, you can't just have it outside.
Well.
Undercover, like a barn.
Well, yes, but I'm gonna look and see if we can get a topal in, and get hay logs, and stockpile it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what we should do.
Or is there any place in town we could stockpile it undercover?
Because you have a lot of money left, you should spend it as much as you can.
Could we just buy, like, futures on this, instead?
D E M like that, but there's slower rules about this.
Let's, let's hedge like a, like a, like a, an airline company would do.
But I, I'm really sure that you, you could at least buy more right now.
We, we have the money to buy more.
I went by the garage, it is pretty full.
Yes, and you'll, and, and I like Mike's idea, but I, there's no place that I know in town. The only place we could probably do it is somewhere on site, and have to get topalins and hay logs, and we'll see if we can do that.
So, is there any private business in town that might have space that we could rent that would allow us to do that? I don't know, I, I just posing it, because even paying rent on that $1,000 a month, if you pay, yeah, that's probably high, I don't know, $12,000, and then you still get $70,000 or so worth of salt.
I'm gonna check on that typically, I'm not aware of one, because you, you have to have a high roof to be able to do that.
Yeah, yeah.
And, in fact, you're gonna see the sand, salt outside in the yard at some point in the next month or two, because periodically, you have to coat the, the walls, and most people don't want the corrosion on their.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Well, if there's, just somehow, we could spend that 94,000 you've got sitting in there, or maybe think about, yeah.
If we were.
Could we go down to 150?
If we were at some point to look at some of the one-off money that we have for a larger barn for that, so that in the future, we could stockpile, would there be space somewhere? You're, you might not know now, but.
We, we would, I think we could find space if we cleared out, we wouldn't be able to stockpile the, I'm not finding fault with anything, we wouldn't be able to stockpile the decrepit vehicles anymore, which is.
That's fine, we'll figure that out, we'll, we'll dine and get rid of those.
Yeah.
We've got plenty of junkyards in town.
Some junkyard needs to come hit those things.
Yeah.
Um, but Rick, do you, and I value your input on this, do you think it's a good idea to make this a restricted account? So that every year, what you have left over, that money will go into, like, like your baby account, and then that would build up money for you.
The.
Well, keep in mind, what you take, what you did into this would not go into the paving account, so it'd be.
No, 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 so.
I, I would have no objection to making snow removal and sand and salt and gravel restricted accounts. And then if we had 97,000 left over this year, and we thought we were gonna use 150, all we would ask for is 53,000.
Right, that's what I'm saying, and then it would be, because I know we're not spending it, but we taxed it, and it's going into the general fund, and we can use it and bring it back to lower taxes, but sometimes that's, we have to do that for other things. So, it would be like paving, because paving, when we made that restrictive, worked out beautifully.
Yes.
Because you always have money left over there.
And I like your idea, Denise, for snow removal and for the sand, salt, and gravel, and even more so than paving, one of the great things about that is because it is so unpredictable, meaning the weather. If you put this in a restricted account, it, it more level, levels the field.
Okay, now, would I just, no, okay, so, let's.
Do you want me to talk about equipment repair?
Yeah, no, I just wanna see what, a consensus, do, do you all agree to increase, to decrease in that to 150?
Yes, yep.
John, you're okay with that? Dennis, you okay?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, paving, though, you didn't request anything.
No, because I think it was last year that we went to the system of put that in capital. So that was already for fiscal, this fiscal year, and the money would've been the last fiscal year.
So did we give you anything at the casino for paving?
No, we gave ARPA.
Opera, yeah, opera or whatever.
ARPA, yeah.
Was, what's left in the paving, we expect to use in this fiscal year.
We need some more paving.
So, in the next fiscal year, when opera or gaming or whatever comes along, we would like some.
Okay, right now, you have 202.
But, well, that, that.
You have 202,000 right now in paving, in, in the restricted account.
Well, I, I would say that's a little bit confusing, because that's simply the remnants.
Right.
The, that's what gets carried.
It's not the ARPA money.
Yes.
Right, right, but what I'm saying, without the money, you, as of February 28th, there was 202 in there.
Right, and then we have, I think around 580, 620 for paving and the opera.
Right.
Haven't we had a resolution that we roll over money?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Percentage?
And that's why it's.
That's, that's.
That's the restricted.
25%?
25?
25% of what's left over from public works, I believe.
Oh, yes, yes.
Well, we transferred all out first, so there's nothing to roll.
It, it doesn't get 25% of every item, that's my understanding, it's 25% of some items that have a surplus, but not all.
Well, it isn't your salaries.
Yeah, I think salaries are exempt.
I thought it was of your operating cost.
It's your operating, it's not your salaries.
Okay, so I, I stayed correct.
No, 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 you did say it right, it's not the entire budget, but it is your operating expenses. Okay.
Would you like me to talk about equipment repair at all, because that number jumped?
Yeah, it did jump.
I, like, it's pretty standard, why, why we have to have that number there.
But, but we have bought you new, some new, well, used new equipment.
We're very, we're very appreciative, we're very appreciative. Those, of course, come with their own headaches, but they balance out, because they're a lot less than a brand-new vehicle. But the, we did go down last fiscal year, and that bit us in the butt, because we have to keep transferring money. So, we're spending about 15 a month, and, and that's based on, again, safety issues, you have to have things that pass inspection, and the rise in costs of parts. So, it's, we hope that it's gonna go down a little bit. So it's, we hope that it's gonna go down a little bit. If we actually projected it out through April of this year, we'd be at one eighty. But we, back in December, we weren't running that high, so I asked for one sixty when we did the budget. But the uh, it's just the nature of the game. You have equipment, twenty two thousand, twenty one or twenty two thousand do the, do the brakes, the brakes on the front end loader. And twenty thousand, maybe even nineteen thousand to do the chipper. So you have forty thousand dollars in two pieces of equipment.
And the mower.
So.
Well, the mower is, well.
So I'm looking at this. So we gave you in twenty twenty three, a hundred. But we transferred fifty thousand in there to this point. So your revised budget was one fifty. Is everybody following me?
Yes.
Okay. And out of that one fifty, we have twenty two thousand left over.
As of?
As of February twenty eighth.
Right.
Let's hope the dozer stays, you know, doesn't blow the casket.
So.
And after spending fifteen grand a month.
So we revised his budget to one fifty and to this date, we spent about one thirty.
And if I may, through the middle of, through the middle of April or so, we're at about one forty four, one forty five.
Okay.
I, I think the one sixty's.
Yep. Okay. Well, I hope this was helpful. I'm not, but.
No, I mean, but if his stuff, if his trucks go down, we're, we're in a bad way.
We'll go at one sixty.
I'm wondering if we should put some money into paving. I know we have the ARPA, but that's dumb.
I'm wondering about, like, I'm confused about the paving, Rick. You've always requested money in paving.
Right.
That's why I asked you. So I, could we get a real correct amount of what's in paving right now? And could we get, because I know you have a paving plan for the spring. You always do. You know what roads are gonna be done. Could you tell us what you're going to spend of that money? So what you perceive will be left over for next spring. Okay, and then we'll look to see whether or not we need to add to that because I've never seen a paving account go to zero. So I'm a little worried about that. And you know, the roads in this town, we all know, are not in perfect, perfect shape.
No.
I don't want you, and I don't want next spring you say, oh, we didn't allow anything. We have nothing left.
Yeah. We need two million dollars now.
So could you just get that to me, what's actually in the paving restricted account? And then give, and I know you must have a paving plan for the spring and fall. Give me what you're estimated, what that's gonna cost. And then we can have some idea what'll be left over because keep in mind, you're not gonna have it for next. Like, let's see, you asked for zero, so let's see what we're gonna have left over for next spring.
Right, and the reason we asked for zero was because in last year on the operating, we asked for that and they said, no, put it in capital.
Because we had the one-time money.
Yeah, because we had that one-time money.
But that, that's gone. The ARPA money, we, I think we've pretty much spent out.
Well, we still have, I mean, we still have to finalize casino dollars too, so.
Right, but what we tried to do last year. Um, with the ARPA money is try to decrease our expenses. They were one time to fix it. But now we need to look at what's in our restricted account, because I'm worried, that's why I brought it up. I've never, in my twelve years, seen paving go to zero. And that worries me.
Then go do a lot.
And that, that.
I, I certainly wouldn't disagree, but actually in uh tw- the two COVID years, it went down to zero.
It's because nobody was driving.
Well, because we, yeah, because we cut all the.
You weren't paving.
We cut everything out.
All right, because right now what I have is a remaining balance in there, like I told you, is two oh two. But you said that the, the ARPA money is not in here.
Right, you said there's about six hundred thousand?
Yes, about, it might be five eighty, might be six twenty, but.
Right, so you figure that number is, in reality, is like eight hundred thousand then? No, 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 no. That's five hundred with the money and this.
No, no, it's five eighty, six twenty, and then you have.
Plus the two oh two.
Plus you have the two oh two.
Oh, wow. So there's a lot in there.
We, we might get another year.
Yeah.
Well, but, but bear in mind.
But we're not gonna have money to roll over either, so.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, bear in mind please that the, the six, probably about, it was about five fifty on the little roads we did last year. So it's gonna be about five hundred, six hundred, just keeping it the same.
Yeah.
And so that, really, we, we don't need two hundred. But we like to have some money in there because it also covers all the tack coat, all the hot patch that we have to buy throughout the year and coal patch.
So why don't you give me all the number? Does that sound, because we're gonna have another meeting.
Yeah.
Um, give, give me exactly what I asked and then we'll decide if, how much we should put in there, with, with your recommendation, of course.
Okay, thank you.
We're not giving you a hard time. We're just trying to help you. Okay?
I recognize that.
We, we cut about eighty out of, uh, out of the two line items so far, so worst case, we throw at least eighty in there. I mean, and we keep the budget level for operations expenses.
You can go on. Um, I'm just gonna take a quick break, but go ahead. So what else, Rick, do you wanna talk to us about?
So your heat went up, which is un, you know, understandable.
And the, and the heat, Mike, on the uh, we simply facted the current price. We don't know what it's gonna be next year. And then we just raised it, uh, I think three percent or so.
Yeah, and your fuel or oil and tires went up, which.
Fuel, oil, and tire, there's three different categories for that. I think two now because the landfill was taken out. Uh, but the uh. Uh, right, the heat.
Yeah.
Yeah, the.
But I mean, those costs have gone up. We know those costs have gone up, so.
In the, on the heat, we went simply based on the gallons that we used, multiplied by the current rate, which I believe is four thirty five or something like that. And then I think multiplied by three percent or some such.
So.
Fuel oil, the fuel, oil and tires, uh, it may have gone up on the crystalline item. The uh, but that's always a guessing game, no matter what anyways.
Yeah, so um, why the increase in the highway signs?
I, what we have found is for instance, on uh, I think that item is budgeted about four thousand.
Yeah.
And in fiscal year twenty two, we were asked to put in eleven thousand dollars worth of signs. So over time, for whatever reason.
These, these are street signs, like?
Well, well, actually, they're any kind of signs. The, for instance, in one year, the, there's a big increase because of COVID.
Right.
But there are street signs, no parking signs, there's stop signs, there are the.
Reduced, restricted truck signs, those types of things.
Right, and recreational area, there's some signs there, like no pets allowed. Uh, so there's all kinds of signs, but a lot of them are simply because uh people ask, you know, to put up, put up four stop signs in the North Christopher, South Christopher area. Those things are a hundred and twenty dollars apiece. So four little signs, now you're at five hundred dollars.
Okay.
So the budget gets uh increased for a request for that.
Okay. Why do we have a Boeing contractor?
Uh, what we wanted to do is actually get somebody to mow behind the guardrails with a knuckle boom, because our knuckle boom broke.
Thought we fixed it.
No, it was about sixty eight grand to fix it and we said, no, that's too much money. So we're actually looking into buying one, but whether or not we get a knuckle boom or whether or not we get a straight on. If we only get a straight on, then we're gonna need to hire somebody to do behind the guardrails.
Okay, any other questions under operating? So right now, we have that down to five ninety seven nine thirty.
But that doesn't, that doesn't.
That doesn't account for paving, but based on what we've taken out of snow removal and sand, salt and gravel, it brings it down to five ninety seven nine. Five ninety seven nine thirty.
Seven nine thirty.
You're taking seventy eight thousand out. We, we said, we said a hundred thousand for snow removal and one fifty for salt.
And we're, TPW is certainly willing to do its part, but we do remind everybody of our rationale for why we asked for those things, which, which we think is, what we think we asked for is correct, but I understand.
So the new, Dave, you have those? Oh, Dave's gone. Oh, Dave's there. He's not? Um, so then it's one four nine four seven nine nine minus. So it's one four one six seven nine nine for the public works total. One four one six seven nine nine. Again, we're gonna come back to that when we get that paving number. Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Wait, I'm sorry, can you do it again?
So um, the total public works is one four one six seven nine nine?
Okay.
Street lighting expense, you wanna add five thousand?
And did you say one four one?
One, go ahead.
Uh, one four one six five nine nine?
Seven nine nine.
Seven nine nine.
So anybody have?
Don't we get revenue back on the street lighting piece? Like, should this, this, this should be a net zero pub, you know, piece now, isn't it?
It might, and we do get money back. I don't know if that's in here. In our revenue expense.
Huh?
I got it right here.
What?
What were you just saying?
The, like, the street lighting expense, you know, if we're asking for.
I could never understand street lighting.
If we're asking for eighty, this should be net zero at this point.
Right, I brought this up to Chris and he was gonna look into it with Denise. Because when I was looking.
It's never gone down. It just keeps going up.
When I was looking at this the other day, to me, it didn't make any sense.
I mean, it's okay if we're getting the offset, you know, if we're getting eighty in the offset for what we're supposed to be saving, but.
All right, so right now, actual street lighting was seventy five thousand.
Yeah.
We have spent forty two. We have fifty six percent expenditure. We have thirty two left.
But I'm sure it's a, it's a quarterly payment that goes out, right?
Well, keep in mind that, that like the first year, year and a half, we didn't get a bill at all from these people.
Right.
They were way behind. Yeah, I don't see anything on the revenue side. So Chris is looking into that?
Well, I asked Chris too, um, but you know, we'll have to ask, we'll have to.
I mean, I think, at least for that one, we just leave it at eighty and we'll, we'll come back to it.
Yeah.
Yeah, street lighting and I'll look into that this week. It's, I might do this.
Back of my budget here. There we go.
And then hydrants, um.
That's even.
Has that number ever changed?
No. Never. I don't even know what they do with it. What do you do with it? Oh, that's for North, that's for the fire districts.
No.
Maybe they paint the fire areas.
Yeah, probably.
Clearing them and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Open them up. Yeah.
Rubbish.
Hydrant services. This is the dart throw.
So are you counting what may go into this for, as, like the pay as you throw is continuing?
Rubbish.
I, I don't factor in pay as you throw at all, if that's your question.
But if you think about it, we've decided that the pay as you throw is going to go to rubbish colle- and recycling collection.
That and maintaining landfill.
Landfill, right.
Which is gonna take a lot of it.
And, and we have to pay off the landfill because we, we currently don't have the money to pay it off.
We put the ARPA funds to it.
Yeah, we put the ARPA funds to it.
Yeah, so we're good.
We're good.
To, to the.
To the increased costs.
Yeah.
And the fence too, right?
Yeah.
And the fence, just recently.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I don't know if the money's in your account yet because we have finalized it, but.
But rubbish recycling collection, what I'm saying is, you're asking for this amount, but you haven't looked into the revenue for pay as you throw and how that will offset that.
That's correct. We have not factored in our backup sheet for that, the, the one page fifty five hundred for the sixty four fifty seven.
Pay as you throw is revenue.
That does lay it out, but there's no, there's no subtraction.
Yeah, well, there wouldn't be. We have to budget the full, what we think the full amount is and then we would net it out when we handle the revenues in the backend, so.
It'll, it'll, it'll work out when we think about it.
So let's, let's talk about pay as you throw and what we get yearly. It's on the front page, Joe?
Yes, right there.
Oh, of course it is.
Yeah, where's Mike? Here we go.
Okay, so.
Which page? Oh, on the tra, in.
It's on the front of this.
It's in the revenue one. Um, so pay as you throw we settled for fifty four, five thousand as of February.
No, well.
That doesn't look right.
For twenty three, we have three hundred grand from.
Okay, you're right. Okay, so twenty three.
It goes up like fifty grand a month.
Right, so. But that, okay, so three hundred so far right there.
Okay.
And that's a restricted account?
Yes.
And that's gonna go towards collecting trash.
We have to modify it so it also includes being able to monitor landfill costs.
Right, which.
Is included in the ordinance.
Right.
Right. So what if it goes to fifty thousand?
Add two hundred thousand through the end of the year.
Okay, so it'll be five hundred.
See, my, my memory is that, that the town collected around three fifty a year nowadays.
More or less.
But the net results for twenty twenty three as of February, end of February, is three hundred thousand is in there right now.
I guess the, the real question, because again, we, we wouldn't reduce the budget number because we have a restricted account offset. So we still need to know what the full contract's gonna be. We think one point six one million is gonna cover the bids that are out there?
We, we, we don't know what the bid's gonna come. What we said was the curbside pickup for January through June of this year, which is the most, uh, most recent number we have. Uh, and we multiply that by ten percent in twelve months and then we put in the fuel adjustment monthly charge, which again is a guessing game because you don't know what the fuel adjustment's gonna be every month. And then the tipping fees. The one thing I would say, when I was going over this again, uh, this week, is that I base this on back in December, the cap number that the town has, which was fifty four hundred some.
Mm-hmm.
The cap has been reduced to fifty one hundred.
Just one.
So we're looking at maybe eighteen thousand dollars in increase because the cap has been lowered.
Is that, is that Rhode Island Resource Recovery doing that or is that state?
No, Rhode Island Resource Recovery, they cut it six percent, uh, the caps basically across the board.
Everybody?
Everybody.
That's trying to get everybody to move everything to recycling.
Well, they, they come up with the numbers and they multiply by.
Well, and, but here's the issue with that is that we've obviously seen some significant population growth in this town. And so our population numbers go up. Obviously, the amount of trash we send to the landfill is gonna go up and they're cutting how much before they start cranking the fees up on us? That's absurd. So.
What are they doing statewide, John?
Well, I understand they're doing it statewide, but like.
What he's saying is if, 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 if resource recovery knocked it down by six percent, our population didn't grow by six percent. So.
It didn't, it didn't decrease by six percent. Our population probably increased by ten percent.
I don't think so.
Yeah, Rhode Island Resource picks a number they want for tonnage. They do the regular population census. They factor in every town for seasonal. They come up with a, a, a seasonal and a regular population. And they divide it by your percentage of the state population. And so every town is assigned a cap, so. But across the board, they went down this year, but our number went down by three hundred or so tons. And that means an increase if you meet that cap, uh, fifty seven, additional, additional fifty seven dollars or so. And that comes out to about eighteen grand, which is not big in the scheme of one point six.
John, let's talk something over here. So the contract's gonna cost one point six, okay?
That's what we're guessing.
Okay.
Right.
We have a restricted account for this. So why wouldn't we do the same thing we do in paving? And say that it's gonna offset this because it is restricted. It's not just a plain revenue. It's a restricted account.
It does make more sense. Cause it's, cause it's tied to that. So we, so we could, we cut three hundred thousand off of one point six. That's more likely what we're gonna raise, knowing that we got three hundred coming in from the pay as you throw.
We still have the money to pay the contract.
Right, because it's a restrict, it's a revenue, but it's a restricted.
First is if we, if we, if we leave it this way, what we're really saying is the contract's one point nine.
Right, that's what I'm saying. So can't we reduce that to say, oh, we know we have three hundred thousand in it right now and we're gonna get fifty a month. So there's gonna be more. So can't we reduce this to one point three because we've got the restricted account to offset it? Because it is a revenue, but it's a restricted revenue.
So really, it should be one, because if we're catching fifty a month, then that's six hundred thousand.
But let's just say.
Make sure that we've, we're not missing expenses other than this.
Right, right, right. And like Jay said, it's still the maintenance of the recycle center and, and still, still for the closure of the landfill.
Yeah, it's the, it's the closure of the landfill is the issue.
Right.
If we have to do the testing and stuff, so we need to know what the testing breakdown is.
So if we reduce it to one point three, I think we'd be safe.
Yeah, we start there and come back and strip through it later.
But then you're still gonna have the expense of the landfill permitting, testing, engineering, which will not be offset at all.
Of course it will be. There'll still be three hundred thousand in there.
No, it won't.
Yes, there will be.
So right now, in February. You spent it on.
No, no, no. Right now, this is what we have.
Yeah, but aren't you gonna use that to knock this down?
Right, but then you're gonna get fifty a month. So if you do fifty a month until July, that's gonna go up to five hundred. So you're gonna have an additional two hundred thousand in there, which I feel will probably be fine for testing and everything.
It's, it's, but testing's at seventy five thousand right now.
Right, right. So every year, right. So if you look at it, so.
So what do you wanna do? E-mark, earmark a specific portion of it?
We already have. We already have.
All right.
So what I'm saying is, yes, every year, but then in July, till next July, you're gonna have five, five hundred thousand probably in there.
Yeah.
So when I'm, yes, I know it's a revenue, but it's a restricted revenue.
It's, it's specifically to cover the, so.
So does this make sense to all of you?
Right, because we're not gonna use it for something else.
Okay, right.
So, so in, in reality, then when we look at fifty five thirty landfill. So, so in, in reality, then, when we look at 5530 landfill engineering, testing, permitting, that number's at 75,200. That should be a zero in the budget because we're going to take it out of the restricted account.
Exactly.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying, and that's why we did it.
Right.
And we did it to decrease taxes. So we can't just count it as revenue that goes into general fund.
Right.
And I, I may be mistaken, but, but I think I am not. My clear memory is that we take in about, nowadays, for the last year or so, we take in about 350 total in the pay as you throw revenue. A year. Not, not the number that's, I think you, you ladies and gentlemen are saying. My clear memory, although I may be wrong, but I think I'm not, is 350 a year.
So maybe we need to get a firm number from Denise.
But what I'm saying is, right now, as of February, Rick, you already have 300 in there.
I don't know. There may be carryover or something.
Yeah, why don't we find out from Denise?
And as, as of March, we have 349.
Yeah. See, as of March, so we are getting 50,000 every year.
But you don't know what was left over from last year.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't know the monthly.
Yeah, some Monday.
I just, my memory clearly, although I may be wrong, but I think I'm not, is 350 a year.
So for now, why don't we just say 1.3?
No, no, that's what I'm looking at.
Okay, so for now-
For now, we'll say 1.3.
And then I'll get the bill.
Right, and then we can adjust it if we need to.
If we have to come back and say 1, 1.35, then we'll do that, now to make sure that that, that 75,250 is covered too.
Right, right.
Because this was the whole theory of our resolution, was to decrease trash costs.
Well, just to tie, just to tie the revenue to what it's actually going towards.
Which is basically doubled.
Right.
And, but just for the sake of clarity, the 1.6 is contract services, but it's also the tipping fees.
Yep.
It's also the dumpsters.
Yep.
Right.
But that's all encompassed in that ordinance.
So what we're going to do is put 1.3 in there, and then I'll, it's on my to-do list for Denise, so do it this, well, yeah, I'll do it this week.
Tipping fees went up this year, didn't they?
Well, I don't really have to do it this week because we're probably going to have a meeting the following week.
Right.
I'm just worried because I'm going away for a little while, but-
If you need me to cover.
Okay. So that would be 1.3.
And then when we get to the next one, we're going to take the 75,250 down to zero, right? Because that's going to come out on that same thing.
So what's the onsite wastewater, waste treatment, where's that? Is that at the landfill?
No, the, uh, for whatever reason, the, that number-
Oh, I know what that is. Never mind.
Yeah.
Okay. I was just trying to see if we could take that, but we can't. It's completely different.
So what, so John, which line are we looking at?
I'm sorry, I jumped to landfill operations.
Testing permitting?
Yeah, I took that number to zero. That gets you to 92680.
Okay.
I mean, those are repairs, so pretty straightforward.
But this was our plan. That's why we're continuing pay as you throw, to offset taxes.
And, and it's also crucial so people properly recycle and pay their due diligence.
Right, and people need to realize as they're recycling, this is helping.
Right.
So, all right, so we'll make that zero too. Uh, for now, and we will talk about this at our later meeting. All right, um, and so the landfill operations went down significantly because there's no more landfills.
And, and they transitioned, a lot of the cost transitioned over.
But we are going to subtract 75.
Right, so John gave us the number of 92680?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, building maintenance, this is all ask me, the increases, we have, we do have a tentative agreement with them, and the minute they vote and get back to us, I'll put it on an agenda, but, um, this reflects what we agreed to.
Can I ask Rick something here?
Sure.
Going back to operating landfill?
Yes.
Shouldn't we spend, be spending a lot less on bulldozer?
Repairs?
It, it's not going to be beat up at that landfill anymore.
Well, we do have some old repairs we, we hope to do for the undercarriage. So that's why that number is-
It's, it's probably-
Not just the undercarriage, but the machine, the upper carriage too. That's why that number is there.
Right.
Maybe it'll go down next year.
We use it just for the landfill, though.
No, they're going to use it for other stuff now, too.
Rick, you've only spent 22% of that this year, so you have 38,000 left. Can't you use that to-
Fix it now.
To fix it now?
The-
The bulldozer repairs right now, we've only spent $11,000. We allocated 50, so you have 38942 left.
We can, we can see if we can do that, but one of the thoughts was fiscal year-wise, I'm not saying we, we can try.
We also, we also have two bulldozers too, though.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
And up until very recently, we needed both operated because they kept coughing out.
But we don't anymore, but, okay, so can you, right now, before July 1st, spend 38942?
We, we can certainly look into that.
Well, I think you need to do it, right?
Spend it now.
Right, spend it now, and then our bulldozer repair, could we decrease this amount now?
Well, I mean, I, the question really is what additional work beyond the 38,000 you got?
How much money do you think you need to fix what you say needs to be done?
If, if we can get everything to work, and of course, we, we would be able to encumber the money if we can get somebody to say how much it's going to be.
Right.
We could cut that number down to, I don't know, maybe 25?
Thank you. But please, make it a priority to spend that 38942 right now and fix it.
We will, we will endeavor to do so.
Fix what you can, anyway.
Thank you. Good pick, Jay.
And to answer Jay's earlier question-
78, 72780.
The, the rates were a year or so ago, 47, and not this fiscal year, but the, the next one after this one coming up, is going to be 63. So the tipping fees have gone up in a few years.
Yeah, that's what I thought. They went up a bit.
Yeah, over maybe a course of four years, from 47 to 63. Which is quite an increase percentage-wise.
Yes.
It's really funny. I'm looking at building maintenance now. Your tool equipment repay, you brought up $40? Not even.
Where are you at?
35.
Yeah, we, we just went up 3%, I think.
Okay.
John, what was your number? I missed it.
Oh, 72780. It was, uh, when we take the 51,500 down to 25 grand, it's 19,900.
Yeah, I just didn't hear what you said. Thanks.
Building maintenance.
I mean, pretty straightforward there. Salaries.
Salary's fueled.
Okay. And then parks and mowing? Maintenance and mowing?
The, basically, the two items there, one was the portage, John. Uh, we're finding, we're, we project, based on all the increase, very beneficial, very good increase in recreational events, we expect to be about 8,000 on Porto Park.
And what's this new one?
That's, that is what Stu had mentioned earlier, uh, in regards to when things happen at the recreational areas, the town farm, book of march, and beaches. What we have found is we haven't, we have to swipe from some other account to do things when, for instance, the lights fail, we have to get an electrician, vandalism, renting lifts, signs that are requested, or fence poles, Grinnell Beach pumping, the engineered wood fiber for town farm and the new playground.
So Stu has this moving $2,000 to you?
So does that need to go to 10?
So did you account for that?
The-
Well, wouldn't that be 2,000, that number then?
It's, it's not strictly accounted-
Is this just pumping?
I thought his 2,000 was just pumping.
Right.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Mike just said that.
Which could be Grinnell's.
Yes.
Right, so the question is, is it 8,000 plus 2, or is that 2 included in that 8?
Well, it's a great question. The problem is, is that we don't know what it's going to be. It was estimated, uh, overall, with the various things being about, you know, 8, 9,000. So we don't even know for sure how much we're going to pump at Grinnell's. Some years, we pump more than others. So if you wanted to change that number, I, I might make it 9,000 instead of 8,000.
Why don't we just move that number to include Stu's transfer?
And keep it at 8, or do it 9, what Rick just suggested?
Or 9 or 10, one or the other.
I, I'd be okay with 9.
So 65?
I mean, I wouldn't mind 10, but I'm, I'm also-
Well, it's like you said, you, you never know what's going to happen at Grinnell's.
No. I think repairing the ruts when somebody had some fun at town farm, I think that was about $1,200. You, you don't know what that's going to be.
The ruts?
Yeah.
Somebody drove over all the grass.
All the grass, yeah.
Donuts.
Did we ever catch that person?
Not, why not?
Oh, because if we caught that person. But don't we have cameras?
That's why we insisted on cameras.
But now we have cameras.
Then we didn't.
So now we may be able to.
You know, maybe we should add, like, $2,000 to this as, like, reward money from when somebody does something.
I'd be willing to give my stipend if, if, if they catch him. All right, um, so the grand total, John, do we?
Oh, I'm sorry. So for that one, it's 70, or 65,750. Oh, we get it. Yeah, let me add all this stuff up.
Let me add. And while he's doing that, Joan, I know I've asked you this 100 times, but my mind's baffled. When do we have to have the final one in by?
13th?
13th.
The 13th.
The preliminary is May 13th.
Okay, so we have a town council meeting on the 8th, which I'm not sure we're going to be able to do. So what I was suggesting is that we have another one. And I don't know what you guys are doing, May 11th, on a Thursday, to do the final.
Yeah, I mean, that's fine. I just don't know what I'll be doing until that week.
That doesn't make any sense.
Do we have one, do we have one on a Saturday?
I think, do we have another one on a Saturday? We don't have next Saturday.
May 6, we could, yeah.
What day is that?
Oh.
It's a Saturday. I have that on my calendar.
Yeah.
I think we had talked about that.
Yeah, we talked, you want to do that, May 6th? And then we could all, always, but, but see, my problem with that is Chris is still aware.
Oh, yeah, we need Chris here.
So that's why I wanted a May 11th one.
Okay, that's a, that's a Thursday?
Yeah.
So change the May 6th to May 11th?
Yeah, and that's what the schools are talking about now that I think about it, to do that preliminary, yeah.
7 o'clock or 6?
So just remember, you should be getting the budget committee's recommendations, 425.
425.
And then the preliminary unified budget ordinance is due 5/13.
Right, but I don't, because of all the new questions we have, I really would like Chris to be here for the, for one of these.
Well, do we want to keep the 6 so we can look over what the budget committee gives us, and then do the 11th for the final?
Okay, if that's all right with everybody. Am I going to be here?
No.
Yes.
All right, let's go back to my calendar. I was adding.
So May 11th is at 6:00 PM, but we're still doing the 6th at 9:00 AM.
And it may be brief, you know, depending.
May 6, 9:00 AM.
Okay.
May 11th, 6 or 7?
I'd like to do it at 6, if people are available.
Yeah, I just don't know if I have to be at the State House until that week.
Okay. Um, and then I'll get these questions answered by May 6th.
You got number, John?
The street lighting piece.
I have the budget in there. Yeah, I'm just waiting for-
Charles, go ahead.
Go ahead, John.
All right, uh, 3,075,230.
Okay. We cut that quite a bit.
3,75,000.
3, 3, 3, 0, 7, 5, 2, 3, 0.
We have to get this in the parliage. Who, who does this? Chris does it, right? Says, Dave did all.
And he comes back when?
Me. We could maybe, Mary Lou has it, so I, I could go over it with Mary Lou and see if we can get one.
Don't we have a meeting made?
Yes.
Yes.
So my question to all of you is, do we keep the May 6th meeting?
I think we should.
Okay.
I think just to review their, their proposal.
All right, and then, May 8th would be the town council meeting.
And we could throw stuff on that agenda if we had to.
Right, but can we have a May 11th? Can we just book a May 11th, and if we don't need it, we don't need it? But I've got you all May 11th.
I have it in my calendar.
Yep.
You can, you can deal with Kelsey. It's her birthday.
So the 8th or the 11th will be the final?
She'll be fine.
Is it a big number? You don't have to say which number. Is it a big number?
No.
Okay.
We'll sing to her.
She's in her, she's in her early 30s.
Oh, no, I'll tell you what, what it is. It's 33. Yeah, because it's the same as Ali.
And it's, and it's five years younger than me.
Yeah, yeah, and what I'll do is I'll have a little birthday cake, and we'll have it on camera. And John, you can blow it out, and she'll, she'll be really mad at us.
Oh, she will be. I can assure you that.
So May 11th at 6 o'clock, and then we'll do Saturday at 9 o'clock, May 6th. And that's why the school committee keeps thinking that we had it on May 6th, but that was just a tentative in case we needed it, and-
Right.
We decided to do it the other day.
Would you expect the school committee again on the May 6th?
I don't think we need them back.
I don't think we need them back. I think we'll-
We, we want that information.
I think on that agenda, it's just remaining budget, like, that kind of-